Thank you, please be seated. Oh, sorry, you can do the mace, go ahead. I'm just very anxious to get rolling because I know we've got lots to do and I know it's also near the end of the summer, so we'll see how efficient we can be today, but colleagues, thanks and welcome to the 14th meeting of City Council. I'm going to start with a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee, Lenin-Pewak and Atawandron peoples. We honour and respect the history, languages and culture of the diverse Indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all of the treaties that are specific to this area: the Two-Roe Wampum Bell Treaty of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy Civil Covenant chain, Beaver Hunting Grounds Treaty of the Haudenosaunee Nanfan Treaty of 1701, the McKee Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1796, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Anishinaab, and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Wampum of the Anishinaab and Haudenosaunee. The three Indigenous nations that are neighbours to London are the Chipewas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and the Muncie Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, customs and cultures. I'll also add that the City of London is committed to making every efforts to provide alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. To make a request specific to this meeting, please contact councilagenda@london.ca or 5196612489 extension 2425. Okay, next we have our Oh Canada singer, a national anthem singer. We have with us Deirdre Kambamba. She was born in Quebec and raised in Trafalgar Heights. She is a bilingual, multidisciplinary artist and theatre arts educator from London's very own Francophone community. With a background in musical theatre and creative writing, this Western University alumni offers French-language theatre education workshops to children throughout the city. She's also the co-founder of Four Quarters Culture, pronounced Quarters, it's got a four in it, so if you read it, that makes sense. Anyways, Quarters Culture, which is an up-and-coming London-based music and cultural hub, which seeks to create spaces for underserved communities in our local creative scenes. Please join me in welcoming Deirdre, who will now sing the national anthem, and please rise. Thank you.
Hello. Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us commend. Car ton bras sé portait les pays, ils sé portait la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillants exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Thank you, merci.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for indulging my Ron Burgundy moment where I actually read what my staff said in the background, where it says, "This is how it's pronounced." I read "pronounced quarters." I will literally read whatever's on that page. All right, disclosures of pecuniary interest. I'll look to colleagues for disclosures of pecuniary interest. Okay, seeing none. Then we have a couple of recognitions to do. I'm going to do all of them from the podium. So just give me one second. Okay, colleagues, we'll make sure it's perfect. You'll recall at a previous meeting we approved the 2023 Queen Elizabeth Scholarship recipients, and we said we would recognise them in a future council meeting. So this is that council meeting, and we have both here today, one joining virtually and one in person. So I'm going to recognise them both separately. The Queen Elizabeth Scholarships are scholarships that the City of London hands out to exceptional students across the school systems here in the City of London who have exceptionally high averages, and in both cases, they were both 99.00%, which is amazing. And so first we want to recognise Chi-Ying Ho, who is here from London and will be attending Duke University in Durham, North Carolina, to pursue a double major in computer science and public policy. Pursuing a dream of becoming either a professor or a patent lawyer, shared a little bit of hobbies in the application, enjoying skiing, ice skating and violin, and had other recognitions to which has been recognised for in an incredible way, was named Teen Titan by Forbes Magazine on a list of the top 13 social activists for 2024, received a national silver medal from Scholastic Arts and Writing Awards, and was shortlisted for the top 25 immigrant awards. And so those are quite the accomplishments. Chi-Ying, I know you're joining us digitally. I don't know if you want to turn on your camera and say hello, and if you want, you're welcome to say a few words if you want to turn on your microphone and say that. But let me say on behalf of council and the City of London, congratulations on the accomplishments. We're sorry you couldn't be here today, but we're certainly very proud of you.
Yeah, I just want to thank you so much, the City of London, for this opportunity. I'm currently at Duke University right now, which is why I was unfortunately not able to join, but I really appreciate all the support that our family, my school, my councillors and teachers have given me, and this would not be possible without them.
All right, thank you so much. We really appreciate it, and congratulations again. All right, next we have Adrian, who's joined us. Do you want to come up? Come on up. So let me say first, on behalf of City Council, congratulations on your accomplishments. We know you're headed off to Western University right here for engineering. Your favourite subjects, I know you said were math and computer science, so no surprise that engineering made it your way. And I guess your future ambitions are to be a software engineer. And other accomplishments and awards, completed the Royal Conservatory Music Level 10 Piano Exam, which I know is quite the accomplishment as well, and of course, significant scholarships from the University of Western Ontario, actually one of the top 250 students with the highest admitted average to the University of Western Ontario this year. So another amazing accomplishment, and we're very proud of you. Would you like to say a few words? And congratulations.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm very grateful for this recognition from the City of London for recognising all of the hard work I put in at school. This is the city I have grew up in my whole life, and this award inspires me to continue pushing forward the boundaries of my potential as I continue my journey in academics and start studying engineering this fall. I am excited for the future, and once again, thank you to the City of London for this special award.
Okay. Next, we have what is an exciting annual event. We have a number of guests with us today. I might have you come up in just a second. I'm going to read a little bit about this. This is the OLG Municipal Contribution Agreement Council Recognition. I'm pleased that everybody could join us today. City Councils acknowledge the Ontario Lottery and Gaming Corporation for its continued investment in London, Ontario, and its important partnership with the City of London through the Municipal Contribution Agreement. In 1999, the City of London entered into a municipal contribution agreement with OLG. Under this agreement, OLG provides an annual share of the gaming revenues generated from Gateway Casinos to the City of London. These funds are then earmarked for projects that positively impact residents in all corners of our vibrant community. From April 1st, 2023 till March 31st, 2024, we received over $5 million from OLG through the revenue generated at Gateway Casinos London. This revenue has played a critical role in supporting several essential community initiatives, including funding not-for-profit organisations throughout the City of London's Community Grants Programme. Specifically, $59,500 was allocated to the Glen Cairn Community Resource Centre to fund programmes for children, youth and families and older adults in the Glen Cairn Pond Mills area, including basic need support programmes, community development and youth leadership. $42,500 was allocated to the London Environmental Network to support the environmental incubator, which provides coaching and supports organisations looking to improve their environmental outcomes related to waste reduction, recycling, protecting enhancing waterways, wetlands, natural areas, energy reduction and conservation. Today, we are honoured to be joined by representatives from the Glen Cairn Community Resource Centre and the London Environmental Network, two organisations that have greatly benefited from these funds through the partnership with OLG. These organisations have played a pivotal role in our community's wellbeing, and we are also grateful and to recognise their outstanding contributions today. The remaining funds received from April 1st, 2023 till March 31st, 2024 through the contribution agreement were used for a range of projects, including a large portion of the cost of purchasing green bins, both for the seven-liter kitchen type and the 45-liter roadside ones for London's new green bin programme, which started in January 2024 for an estimated 121,000 households in London. There was support for the purchase of vehicles for the London Fire Department, one inch fire engine and two articulating aerial platform vehicles, expanding the parking lot at Deerness Home, the city's only long-term care facility, continuing to support other community organisations in our city, the London Boys and Girls Club, operating funding to support seniors programming, children and youth recreation sport, nutrition programmes, education and leadership initiatives, and the London Millisack Heritage Museum, operating funding to support Fan Shop Pioneer Village, delivering programmes, events, education activities and exhibitions, and to preserve its collection of 33 original and replica buildings and more than 40,000 artefacts. In total, the city has received more than $99 million in non-tax gaming revenue for hosting a gaming facility in the City of London since the inception of this agreement. These revenues are the cornerstone of supporting local programmes and essential infrastructure, making a substantial tangible difference in the lives of the people of London, Ontario. I'd also like to recognise Gateway Casinos London as a key employer in the Old East Village community. Currently, the casino employs 244 people, but this number will increase by 100 once the $50 million renovations are completed in 2025. Thank you for your continued partnership and investments in London OLG. I'd now like to invite all the members of OLG up, including Kathleen Devine, who's a senior municipal relations manager for OLG, who will provide some remarks as well. And you can bring up whoever else you want from your team.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you to the City of London and city councillors, city staff for every year inviting OLG and Gateway to come here to present to you. It's always a tonne of fun coming here, and this year it's exciting because, you know, as you mentioned, we've been here for 25 years this year, and instead of saying almost just over 99 million, it's almost $100 million that the city has received through the MCA that you were speaking about. And, you know, you spoke of some of these incredible positive impacts, right, this money makes to this city. My colleague Karen and I today have the honour of earlier today meeting with the folks from Glen Cairn Community Resource Centre, and we did a bit of a tour with the folks there. Thank you for being here. And this afternoon, we get to join Leah and Mackenzie to head out and look at firsthand what the London Environmental Network does. So that's a really great part of our job, that we get to see firsthand the positive impact of these funds in the community, and then we can take these stories back to our fellow OLG'ers and let them know the great work that is being done all across the province. It really is all about making life better for people. That's what resonates with OLG. 100% of our profits go back into the province of Ontario every year, and it's something that we've been able to do for almost 50 years now. So again, thank you for inviting us here. I think we might now have a big cheque presentation?
Yes.
Fantastic. So these funds that are written on the cheque represent fiscal '24's amount received by the City of London through OLG, and as Mayor noted, the amount is $5,122,116.
Perfect, come on up, yes, thank you.
Come around, yeah.
Thank you very much. That concludes the recognitions I have. I'll return to my seat and see if councillors have any other recognitions. Thank you. I'll return to my seat and see if councillors have any other recognitions. Thank you. Are there any other recognitions that colleagues might have? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll be really brief, but I wanted to take this opportunity to rise and recognize and congratulate councillor Hopkins on her reelection to the Board of Directors for the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. We all just returned from a fantastic conference. We had lots of great delegations with the province. We had opportunities to speak to mayors and councillors from around this province. All 444 municipalities in the province of Ontario, with the exception of one big one who's not an AMO member, were participating in this conference. It was a great one. And councillor Hopkins, I know that you're looking forward to the work that will continue with the new board that was elected. I know you've got a great team there, and I know you'll continue to be London's voice for our needs on that board. So I just want to take the opportunity to congratulate you on your reelection.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and again, congratulations councillor Hopkins. Any other recognitions? Okay, seeing none. A review of confidential matters to be considered in public, we have none. So we have our council in closed session items. There are seven of them on the agenda. I'm going to look for a motion to move into closed session for those moved by councillor Hopkins, seconded by councillor Frank. Any discussion? We will open that with voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, we're moving to committee room five, colleagues, so we'll head over there now.
Okay, thank you. Please be seated. All right, we're back in public session. We're on to item five, which is the confirmation and signing of the previous minutes. We have the 13th meeting held July 23, 2024. I need a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Counsel Ramon, seconded by Counsel Cuddy. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Okay, item six is communications and petitions. We have to deal with 6.1 and 6.2, then 6.3 and 6.4. Then we can make a motion to refer all the rest of them to the various parts of the agenda. So I'm going to start with the first two items. And if colleagues will recall, this is where counsel will move to sit as the approving authority. Then, as we sit as the approving authority, we'll make recommendations to the expropriating authority. Municipal council is the expropriating authority. And so we actually make the motion twice because sitting as the approval authority, we make a recommendation to counsel as the expropriating authority, and then counsel makes the decision. So I will say there's two expropriations on the agenda. We can't do them both while sitting as the authority. We have to move in and out each time. I'll say the clerk is looking into whether or not we can streamline that. It requires a little bit of research and legislation, but given it's an expropriation, and we definitely don't want to have made a misstep, we'll do it in and out, and then in and out, and do these very cleanly until we can find a better way to do it. But if you bear with me, I will go through the motions with you. So the first motion that we have to move is for counsel to convene as the approving authority. So I'll look for a mover and a seconder for that. Counsel Hopkins and Counsel Lehman. Okay, so this is to convene as the approving authority. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
Okay, item six is communications and petitions. We have to deal with 6.1 and 6.2, then 6.3 and 6.4. Then we can make a motion to refer all the rest of them to the various parts of the agenda. So I'm going to start with the first two items. And if colleagues will recall, this is where counsel will move to sit as the approving authority. Then, as we sit as the approving authority, we'll make recommendations to the expropriating authority. Municipal council is the expropriating authority. And so we actually make the motion twice because sitting as the approval authority, we make a recommendation to counsel as the expropriating authority, and then counsel makes the decision. So I will say there's two expropriations on the agenda. We can't do them both while sitting as the authority. We have to move in and out each time. I'll say the clerk is looking into whether or not we can streamline that. It requires a little bit of research and legislation, but given it's an expropriation, and we definitely don't want to have made a misstep, we'll do it in and out, and then in and out, and do these very cleanly until we can find a better way to do it. But if you bear with me, I will go through the motions with you. So the first motion that we have to move is for counsel to convene as the approving authority. So I'll look for a mover and a seconder for that. Counsel Hopkins and Counsel Lehman. Okay, so this is to convene as the approving authority. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
Okay, step two is to consider and approve the expropriation as the proving authority, which we're now sitting as. I have to actually read the motion out, so my apologies for that. But that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager, environment and infrastructure, with the concurrence of the director of construction and infrastructure services, on the advice of the director of realty services, with respect to the expropriation of lands that may be required for a project known as the East London Link Project, the following actions be taken. A, the counsel of the corporation of the City of London as the approving authority pursuant to the Expropriations Act. Okay, I can carry on. As amended, hereby approves the proposed expropriation of lands as described in Schedule A, appended to the staff report dated August 27, 2024, in the City of London, County of Middlesex. It being noted that the reasons for making these decisions are as follows. One, the subject lands are required by the corporation of the City of London for the East London Link Project. Two, the design of the project will address the current and future transportation demands along the corridor. Three, the design is in accordance with the municipal class environmental assessment study recommendations for the East London Link Project, approved by municipal council at the meeting held May 21, 2019. And B, subject to the approval of A, the certificate of approval will be issued by the city clerk on behalf of the approving authority in the prescribed form. It being noted that two outstanding properties will be subject to a hearing of necessity, and will be included in future reports. Any -- I need a mover and a seconder for that. Counsel Trossell, seconded by Counsel Cuddy. Any discussion on that?
Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
Okay, I need a mover and a seconder to adjourn the sitting of the approval authority. Moved by Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Deputy Mary Lewis. Any discussion? We'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 15 to zero.
Now, based on the recommendation from the approval authority, counsel sitting as the expropriation authority can move the same motion that I just read out. I need a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel McAllister. Any discussion on that?
Counsel Lewis.
Okay, now that that matter is addressed, we're going to convene as the approving authority again. So I need a motion to convene as the approving authority. Counsel Pelosi, seconded by Counsel Frank. Any discussion? We'll open that for voting.
Counsel Cuddy, Counsel Trossell.
Yes.
Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
Okay, now I'll read the following motion, and then ask for a mover and a seconder. That on the recommendation of the deputy city manager and environment and infrastructure, with the concurrence of the director of construction and infrastructure services, on the advice of the director of realty services, with respect to the expropriation of lands that may be required for the project known as the Wellington Gateway Project. A, the counsel of the corporation of the City of London as the approving authority pursuant to the Expropriations Act, RSO 1990 CE26, be amended. Hereby approves that the proposed expropriation of land is described in Schedule A, appended to the staff report dated August 27, 2024, in the City of London, the County of Middlesex. It being noted that the reasons for making this decision are as follows. One, subject lands are required by the corporation of the City of London for the Wellington Gateway Project. Two, the design of the project will address the current and future transportation demands along the corridor. Three, the design is in accordance with the municipal class environmental assessment study recommendations for the East London Link Project, approved by municipal council at the meeting held May 21, 2019. And B, subject to the approval of A, the certificate of approval will be issued by the city clerk on behalf of the approving authority in the prescribed form. It being noted that two outstanding properties will be subject to a hearing of necessity, and will be included in future reports. Any -- I need a mover and a seconder for that. Counsel Trossell, seconded by Counsel Cuddy. Any discussion on that?
Seeing none, we'll open that for voting. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
Okay, I need a mover and a seconder to adjourn the sitting of the approval authority. Moved by Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Deputy Mary Lewis. Any discussion? We'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 15 to zero.
Now, based on the recommendation from the approval authority, counsel sitting as the expropriation authority can move the same motion that I just read out. I need a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel McAllister. Any discussion on that?
Counsel Lewis.
Okay, now that that matter is addressed, we're going to convene as the approving authority again. So I need a motion to convene as the approving authority. Counsel Ploza, seconded by Counsel Frank. Any discussion? We'll open that for voting.
Counsel Cuddy, Counsel Trossell.
Yes.
Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
Okay, I need a mover and a seconder to adjourn the sitting of the approval authority. Moved by Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Deputy Mary Lewis. Any discussion? We'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 15 to zero.
Now, based on the recommendation from the approval authority, counsel sitting as the expropriation authority can move the same motion that I just read out. I need a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel McAllister. Any discussion on that?
Counsel Lewis.
Okay, now that that matter is addressed, we're going to convene as the approving authority again. So I need a motion to convene as the approving authority. Counsel Ploza, seconded by Counsel Frank. Any discussion? We'll open that for voting.
Counsel Cuddy, Counsel Trossell.
Yes.
Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
Okay, I need a mover and a seconder to adjourn the sitting of the approval authority. Moved by Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Deputy Mary Lewis. Any discussion? We'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 15 to zero.
Now, based on the recommendation from the approval authority, counsel sitting as the expropriation authority can move the same motion that I just read out. I need a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel McAllister. Any discussion on that?
Counsel Lewis.
Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Counsel Cuddy, Counsel Trossell.
Yes.
Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
Okay, now I'll read the following motion, and then ask for a mover and a seconder. That on the recommendation of the deputy city manager and environment and infrastructure, with the concurrence of the director of construction and infrastructure services, on the advice of the director of realty services, the following actions be taken. A, the counsel of the corporation of the City of London as the approving authority pursuant to the Expropriations Act, RSO 1990 CE26, be amended. Hereby approves that the proposed expropriation of land is described in Schedule A, appended to the staff report dated August 27, 2024, in the City of London, the County of Middlesex. It being noted that the reasons for making this decision are as follows. One, subject lands are required by the corporation of the City of London for the Wellington Gateway Project. Two, the design of the project will address the current and future transportation demands along the corridor. Three, the design is in accordance with the municipal class environmental assessment study recommendations for the East London Link Project, approved by municipal council at the meeting held May 21, 2019. And B, subject to the approval of A, the certificate of approval will be issued by the city clerk on behalf of the approving authority in the prescribed form. It being noted that two outstanding properties will be subject to a hearing of necessity, and will be included in future reports. Any -- I need a mover and a seconder for that. Counsel Trossell, seconded by Counsel Cuddy. Any discussion on that?
Seeing none, we'll open that for voting. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
Okay, I need a mover and a seconder to adjourn the sitting of the approval authority. Moved by Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Deputy Mary Lewis. Any discussion? We'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 15 to zero.
Now, based on the recommendation from the approval authority, counsel sitting as the expropriation authority can move the same motion that I just read out. I need a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel McAllister. Any discussion on that?
Counsel Lewis.
Okay, now that that matter is addressed, we're going to convene as the approving authority again. So I need a motion to convene as the approving authority. Counsel Ploza, seconded by Counsel Frank. Any discussion? We'll open that for voting.
Counsel Cuddy, Counsel Trossell.
Yes.
Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
Okay, now I'll read the following motion, and then ask for a mover and a seconder. That on the recommendation of the deputy city manager and environment and infrastructure, with the concurrence of the director of construction and infrastructure services, on the advice of the director of realty services, the following actions be taken with respect to the expropriation of lands that may be required for the project known as the Wellington Gateway Project. A, the counsel of the corporation of the City of London as the approving authority pursuant to the Expropriations Act, RSO 1990 CE26, be amended. Hereby approves that the proposed expropriation of land is described in Schedule A, appended to the staff report dated August 27, 2024, in the City of London, the County of Middlesex. It being noted that the reasons for making this decision are as follows. One, subject lands are required by the corporation of the City of London for the Wellington Gateway Project. Two, the design of the project will address the current and future transportation demands along the corridor. Three, the design is in accordance with the municipal class environmental assessment study recommendations for the East London Link Project, approved by municipal council at the meeting held May 21, 2019. And B, subject to the approval of A, the certificate of approval will be issued by the city clerk on behalf of the approving authority in the prescribed form. It being noted that two outstanding properties will be subject to a hearing of necessity, and will be included in future reports. Any -- I need a mover and a seconder for that. Counsel Trossell, seconded by Counsel Cuddy. Any discussion on that?
Seeing none, we'll open that for voting. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
Okay, I need a mover and a seconder to adjourn the sitting of the approval authority. Moved by Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Deputy Mary Lewis. Any discussion? We'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 15 to zero.
Now, based on the recommendation from the approval authority, counsel sitting as the expropriation authority can move the same motion that I just read out. I need a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel McAllister. Any discussion on that?
Counsel Lewis.
Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Counsel Lewis.
Okay, now that that matter is addressed, we're going to convene as the approving authority again. So I need a motion to convene as the approving authority. Counsel Ploza, seconded by Counsel Frank. Any discussion? We'll open that for voting.
Counsel Cuddy, Counsel Trossell.
Yes.
Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
Okay, now I'll read the following motion, and then ask for a mover and a seconder. That on the recommendation of the deputy city manager and environment and infrastructure, with the concurrence of the director of construction and infrastructure services, on the advice of the director of realty services, the following actions be taken. With respect to the expropriation of lands that may be required for the project known as the Wellington Gateway Project. A, the counsel of the corporation of the City of London as the approving authority pursuant to the Expropriations Act, RSO 1990 CE26, be amended. Hereby approves that the proposed expropriation of land is described in Schedule A, appended to the staff report dated August 27, 2024, in the City of London, the County of Middlesex. It being noted that the reasons for making these decisions are as follows. One, the subject lands are required by the corporation of the City of London for the East London Link Project. Two, the design of the project will address the current and future transportation demands along the corridor. Three, the design is in accordance with the municipal class environmental assessment study recommendations for the East London Link Project, approved by municipal council at the meeting held May 21, 2019. And B, subject to the approval of A, the certificate of approval will be issued by the city clerk on behalf of the approving authority in the prescribed form. It being noted that two outstanding properties will be subject to a hearing of necessity, and will be included in future reports. Any -- I need a mover and a seconder for that. Counsel Trossell, seconded by Counsel Cuddy. Any discussion on that?
Seeing none, we'll open that for voting. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
Okay, I need a mover and a seconder to adjourn the sitting of the approval authority. Moved by Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Deputy Mary Lewis. Any discussion? We'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 15 to zero.
Now, based on the recommendation from the approval authority, counsel sitting as the expropriation authority can move the same motion that I just read out. I need a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel McAllister. Any discussion on that?
Counsel Lewis.
Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting. Two, the design of the project will address the current and future transportation needs along the corridor. Three, the design is in accordance with the municipal class environmental assessment study recommendations for the Wellington Gateway Project, approved by municipal council at the meeting held on May 21, 2019. And B, subject to the approval of A, above, a certificate of approval will be issued by the city clerk on behalf of the approving authority in its prescribed form. It being noted that no requests for a hearing of necessity were received. Any discussion? Oh, mover and a seconder first. Counsel Frank moves, Counsel Cuddy seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
Okay, I now need a motion to adjourn as the approving authority. Moved by Counsel Hopkins, seconded by Counsel Frank. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to one.
Okay, and now, we are sitting as municipal council, which is the expropriation authority. So I need a mover and a seconder for the same motion that I read out that was recommended by the approval authority. Counsel Frank, seconded by Counselor, our Deputy Mary Lewis. Any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to two.
Okay, next, I can take a motion for items 6.5 through 6.9 to refer those to the indicated portions of ... So I could do everything except 6.8. Refer to the items indicated in the brackets behind those. So it would be 6.5, 6.6, 6.7, and 6.9. Counsel Trosaw, seconded by Counsel Lehman. Any discussion on those? Okay, that referral motion, it will open for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Okay, the next item that we have to deal with is the Court of Revision vacancy memo. If you see the memo before you, there's a vacancy, yet there's a matter to be dealt with. I know that there's a member of council willing to serve, to allow the matter to be dealt with. While we continue to advertise for the vacancy. So we can make a motion to appoint a counselor to have this dealt with. And so I would look to see if someone's willing to move a motion to that. I have a wording. I don't know if anybody else is interested, but Counsel Frank expressed an interest in doing this. So if someone's willing to move a motion to appoint Counsel Frank, or we could all battle over the opportunity. Okay, Counsel Ploza, you willing to move that motion? Counsel Hopkins?
Yes, I'm happy to put forward the motion to appoint Counsel Frank.
Okay.
And thank her.
Perfect, because the public can't see it, I'll just read the motion. The Counselor, S. Frank, be appointed to the Court of Revision on a temporary basis until a member of the public is appointed by the municipal council. It being noted that the city clerk's office will continue to advertise for this vacancy. So that is moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we can open that for voting.
Closing the vote, 15 to zero.
Congratulations, thank you for your service, Counsel Frank. Item seven, motions to which notice was given, there were none. We're now on to reports. We have the 12th report of the Planning and Environment Committee, which is not the one from today, but the one from before. We all left for those of us who went to AMO before we left for AMO. So I'll turn it over to Chair Lehman to present that report.
Thank you, your worship. I'd please put the 12th report of the Planning and Environment Committee on the floor. I've been asked for your information to pull the following items. Counsel Ploza requested number four, item number four to be pulled. Counsel Stevenson requested item five to be pulled. And Deputy Mary Lewis requested number 11 to be pulled.
Does anybody want anything else separate other than those items? Okay, I'll let you make a motion, Chair.
Well, I'll move items one through three, and six through 10, and number 12.
Okay, we've got those items on the floor. Moved by the chairs, or any members of council have any discussion on those items? To the chair? Good?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, that's all good then, so we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Thank you, and I'll put item number four on the floor.
Okay, item number four is on the floor by the chair. Any discussion on that? Counsel Ploza, go ahead.
Thank you, as the ward counselor for this area, I did appear at committee and spoke to some current concerns about this. I know that staff recommended passing committee. Just this area, in the last rainfall event, did have significant water issues throughout it. I know that staff are going to work and help mitigate issues as we can, realizing there's other overland water issues in the area. And this proposed development would see two single homes come down and 28 towns go up. And just to reassure residents, as we build out the city and do intensification, that the staff will revisit traffic calming in the areas as we need to, realizing there's another development project with somewhat the same timelines coming up just within the same city block of this one. So just flagging my main concerns where the, if current residents are already flooding, adding 28 more to potentially be welcome to the neighborhood with flooding and sewage issues. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Seeing none, this is moved by the chair. We'll open this for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to one.
Thank you, I'd like to put item number five on the floor.
Okay, item number five is on the floor by the chair. I'll look to any comments. Counsel Stevenson, go ahead.
Thank you, I'd like to move a referral. I've sent the wording to the clerks.
Okay, they do have the language of your, that you sent. Now, they just made some modifications just to fit it in. I'm just going to read it out so everybody can hear it, and then I'll ask for a seconder for your referral. That the application by Highbury Self-Storage Equities Limited related to the property located at 455 Highbury Avenue North be referred to civic administration to work with the applicant to develop a plan for a reduction in expansion to facilitate an adequate tree replacement plan. That's the referral and the reason for it, that the counselors asking for is a seconder for that referral. Counsel Cuddy. Okay, given there's a mover and a seconder, Counsel Stevenson, if you wanted to provide your rationale.
Thank you, yes, I would. And I apologize, I wasn't at planning to speak on this at that time. But this investor has done a lot of work in that building, on that lot, and it's been very much appreciated by the neighborhood and the neighbors. They did have problems with the woodlot. It was causing, there was a lot of criminal activity happening there. They've got it all on videos. They almost lost the investors for the initial project. So this is why they've sort of come back with another extension to this project now that the woodlot has come down, all per and completely in accordance with the permit and the authorization granted by the city. They would really like to work with city staff on finding an agreed-upon solution here that can work. So I wanted to confirm with staff that there's no concern about refund of fees with this deferral.
Okay, I'll go to our staff on, would the referral lead into any sort of refunding of fees or anything? There's two people looking at their microphones. Go ahead.
Through your worship, based on the recent changes to the legislation, there's no longer refunds on fees. So it's in a 120-day timeline, which expires on September 6. However, there's always a risk of an appeal.
So no refund of fees, risk of appeal if the applicant wanted to for, that's for non-decision, right? Within the 120 days? Okay. Go ahead, Counsel.
Okay, thank you. I've had really good communication with this developer over the last year. They really are excited about being a positive impact on this neighborhood. There were no concerns or complaints, none at all, raised by the neighbors during this process. They estimate, at least I didn't confirm with staff, but they estimate a potential additional tax revenue to the city of $175,000 a year in recurring tax revenue. Something maybe that we don't talk about when we look at saying no to some of these developments, but a yes when we talk about budget increases and the need for funds. A simple yes to allow this development could give us that $175,000 in recurring annual tax revenue. We said yes to the zoning change in April of 2023, and it was just for the building, but this is very similar. And according to their plan or the letter that was submitted to counsel and is attached to the agenda, they said that in their professional opinion, the proposed development meets the general intent of the policies of both the light industrial place type and the bridges, streets, special policy area. So again, if we're going to say no to people investing in our city and additional tax revenue, I just, I think, I'd prefer to err on the side of yes, at least in this case for a referral, to continue to allow staff to talk. There was no negative commentary on the tree preservation plan. They are more than happy to plant extra trees. They are willing to take on the maintenance of the city space along Highbury to make sure that it's kept to high standards. I know there's been some complaints about it recently. So they're willing to take on that maintenance. They're willing to work with staff. They're willing to plant extra trees. This is a good thing for the neighborhood. It's a good thing for that area to have that space be empty. Just, you know, we get to recognize as well some of the social disorder issues that we have that are facing the area. And this is not, although it's on the gateway, it's not that visible from Highbury. They're willing to plant trees along the way. It backs onto the railroad tracks. So they are willing to take the responsibility for maintaining the Highbury side. They said that simply restoring the wooded area would be unfortunate as it may lead to renewed illicit activity, would not contribute to an increased tax base for the city, and would halt their efforts to clean up the environmental contaminants currently affecting the parcel. These contaminants appear to have originated from the city-owned property at 450 Highbury Ave. So I received this email from them, and I would really ask for counsel support in this referral to give staff and this developer the chance to find something that really works for the trees, for the environment, and for our tax revenue. So I'm asking for your support. It is in my ward, and I do believe it is a real benefit to my ward and to the city.
Other speakers? Counsel Trosaw.
Through the chair, just a quick question. You indicated that there is a risk of appeal. And if you could reiterate why? Have we received something binding in writing from the applicant saying that there would not be an appeal?
Go ahead.
Thank you, through your worship, the risk of appeal is for non-decision because we're beyond, if we go to the next council meeting or referral back, we're beyond the 120-day timeline.
And ...
Oh, go ahead, Counsel.
Would, through the chair, would some type of letter from the applicant saying they're not going to do that be binding? Or is that just moot because we don't have that?
Go ahead.
Through your worship, in terms of that, that, to some extent, that would be binding. It would be without prejudice, but still would want to have that opportunity for that conversation and to follow through the planning process and the legislative requirements.
But just to be clear, we have not received something that would meet that criteria. Is that correct?
Through your worship, that's correct.
Okay, Deputy Mary Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. So I supported the staff refusal at Planning Committee. However, I'm willing to support the referral here. The applicant has certainly been clear in communications that I've been copied on that there will be an appeal if it's a refusal, and it will go to the OLT. So that is, that's been communicated clearly, at least to myself and I believe to the ward counselor. So this, I think, is an opportunity, although I would appreciate as well if we had it in writing, that we don't, I think, is an indication that they probably will not appeal if we're willing to keep working with them for a little while. My primary concern with the proposal that staff recommended refusal on was with regard to an overall building coverage of 52%. Only 19% landscaped open space on the property. There were 12 trees, and if I'm reading the report wrong, I will ask staff to correct me, but there were 12 trees that were identified in the original proposal that had to be retained. This new expansion would remove a number of those. I think if the applicant is willing to work with our staff and come back, right now, they're proposing five new exterior buildings. The building at the rear of the, or the south side of the lot, I should say, in particular, would require the removal of several of those trees that have been maintained at this point. If they came back with a reduced proposal that did not suggest removing those trees and removed one of those buildings or two of those buildings at the south property line, that may be something that I could get to supporting. Right now, they're proposing an expansion of 66 units. If the removal of that building and somewhere, you know, I don't know what number it would fall in. Obviously, they'd have to redesign the site plan, but if it came in at like 40 or 50, but it preserved those trees at the south lot line and provided more space for an adequate tree replacement program, then I could consider whether or not I would support this. I think what we've got here is an adaptive reuse of an existing building, which we approved notwithstanding our London Plan policies because it was an adaptive reuse, and so it was consistent with the provincial policy statement. Now, we're into an expansion of a use, which is not consistent with the London Plan, but is also not really consistent with the provincial policy statement, although it is consistent with the use in the neighborhood for light industrial that's already pre-existing. So I'm willing to support time for more discussion back and forth. I'm taking the applicant on good faith that they won't appeal for a non-decision because they actually requested the deferral rather than appealing to OLT. So I believe that they are genuinely going to try and work with our staff. Whether we get to a resolution that is supported by either side, that remains to be seen. But I think since they've indicated a willingness to continue the discussion, and given the nature of the referral, that is specific to develop a plan for a reduction in the expansion and insu- and ensure that it facilitates a proper tree replacement program, I think I can entertain at least continuing those discussions for now. So I'll support this, but I'm seeing that with an asterisk because what comes back may still not get my support in the end.
Counselor Roman.
Thank you, and through you to staff, I'm just wondering if you can outline if no agreement comes out of those discussions, what would happen next?
Go ahead.
Through your worship, thank you for the question. With that, it's, we've been, this motion would be giving us direction, so it'd still be notwithstanding the staff recommendation, but we would be following the direction based on this motion, having said that these lands are in a tree protection area, so that was a big, strong basis for the recommendation for refusal. So we'd have to work within that with my colleagues in environmental infrastructure, so with the forestry team, and then dealing with that compensation.
Thank you. Okay, so pursuant to the discussion taking place, and let's say there, your recommendation is still retained as your refusal recommendation, what happens in terms of we've ran the clock of the 120 days, we've not made a decision as a council, you're still recommending potentially, in that case, a refusal, then I don't understand, I'm just trying to understand the process at that point as to what happens? Does it just come back for another planning cycle as the same staff recommendation? What are the implications of that for us, just in terms of the non-decision piece?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Through your worship, I may have misunderstood the direction. We were given the direction here to come back with a plan for a reduction and an expansion to accommodate for a tree replacement plan. So that would still be notwithstanding the staff recommendation, but it would be a direction to bring forward so that then a bylaw would have to be prepared that then could be voted on by council.
Thank you. Okay, so to clarify, sorry, this seems like a little bit of a new nuanced discussion. So we're basically saying that we're taking the refusal, notwithstanding that refusal, we are going in the direction of approval even without that negotiated piece. We're working towards the negotiated piece. This is where I'm a little lost because I feel like we're jumping the gun on a decision and asking staff to arrive at a decision without further information on how we get there, and that's where I'm a little stuck on this. I can understand asking you to go back and asking staff to go back and have a discussion. I can't support some of the language on directing how that discussion then plays out. That's where I'm a bit confused. I'm wondering if maybe staff need clarification on that as well, and if that needs to be straightened out in the language. Those are just my comments.
Thanks, go ahead.
Through your worship, and we made this comment at Planning Committee, the staff would not be supportive of a referred change to the plan. It would still be a refusal. So in that case, the conversation would still be something that would be put forward. However, it will be with a favorable staff recommendation.
Other speakers. Oh, I have Counselor Cuddy, actually. Go ahead, Counselor Cuddy.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. And as a seconder to this motion, I will be supporting the motion, and I just want to reference Counselor Stevenson's comments. We need more investment in London, in East End of London, not less. This is an opportunity for us to have that. Yes, there's been some good faith issues that we've experienced, but I think it seems right now that these investors want to, want to show some good faith, and I think that we should, we should extend that courtesy to them. I'll also mention the fact that this is an area, as Counselor Stevenson alluded to, that has long required some development and some work. It's an area that's had some real issues and, you know, Ward 4 needs some help from us, and I'd certainly be happy to give it to them, and I encourage all my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Other speakers. Go ahead, Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and appreciate the questions. I will not be supporting the referral back if it, it is the wording, if it sort of ended with a referral back to work with staff, I'm happy to do that, but I think this is a little bit too explicit for my support.
Go ahead, Counselor Frank.
Thank you, and through you to staff, I did have a quick question regarding this motion in regards to the tree replacements. My understanding is they already have to do tree replacement, so I guess I'm confused as to why we would be asking them to additionally do it. Like, at this point, my understanding is they already have to have a plan, given that they've cut down those trees, so I'm just hoping you could maybe explain that a little bit, because this seems a bit redundant since they have to do that.
Go ahead. Through your worship, that's correct. There would be a tree replacement plan, working with the forestry team. However, as part of any site plan, we would also look at the compensation of the tree removal. However, it's certainly not at the same rate as the amount of trees that were moved on the site, but having said that, regardless, any development would require a tree replacement.
Thank you, and maybe to clarify, so whether or not, like, my understanding is even if we don't approve anything on this property moving forward, they would still be required to replace trees at a ratio that we determine to be appropriate?
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, that is correct. There is a requirement for tree replacement on the site based on the permit that was issued previously to this latest application for expansion.
Go ahead.
Thank you, yes. So given that I'm not supportive of this motion, my understanding is staff refused it more for reasons towards the London Plan and trying to abide by place types, and we originally approved the redevelopment of this, and we're allowing for it to be used as a storage facility. I did not imagine that they would come forward and then ask for a storage facility external because that was really not the purpose of this application, so I won't be supporting it at this time, and I'd encourage any future applicants that if they're struggling with their properties with social issues, I encourage them to try and properly secure it with fencing as opposed to cutting down trees and natural vegetation.
Okay. Any other speakers? Okay. So the motion before us is on the referral, which you can see moved by Counselor Stevenson, seconded by Counselor Cuddy, so I'm going to open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries eight to seven.
Okay, so that item is completed. I'll go back to the chair.
Thank you, your worship. I'll put item number 11 on the floor.
All right, item 11 is on the floor. I'll look for speakers. Deputy Mary Lewis?
Thank you, worship. So colleagues, this passed at Planning Committee. I've only asked for it to be pulled because I circulated in advance a small amendment. It's a condition on site plan that requires the applicant and the city to enter into an agreement through the site plan process for compensation for any natural heritage feature relocation or removal. That was part of the issue that was expressed and concerned is that it was missed when the alternate motion was put forward. It was always intended. The applicant has no problem providing compensation. However, when we were moving from the refusal to an approval motion and changing some things around, that piece was missed. There is an OS5 zone included in the zoning here, so there is open space. There is an opportunity to do compensation on-site. If that's not attainable, there are opportunities to do compensation on the adjacent site where, certainly through conversations that have been expressed by the adjacent site owner Drew Holdings, that they would welcome the opportunity for some compensation on their site. There's also city-owned lands that could potentially be available for compensation. So this just codifies in the site plan that an agreement for compensation has to be made before everything is finalized. I really, really am encouraging colleagues to support this. I know that the applicant had submitted, and I will say this is my fault because I gave them the wrong email address, they had submitted correspondence from the Argyle Seniors Task Force and the chairwoman there, Joyce Larsch, who has been working on this project with them for a long time. You know, we had a public meeting on this application, well, it's a couple of years ago now. It was the first time I've ever been to a public meeting on a development where there was no objections whatsoever, and in fact, the applicant left with a list of people who wanted to be on the waiting list to get one of these units when the building eventually opened. I think the waiting list now is something like 300 people who've expressed an interest in a unit here. This is meant to be a 55-plus geared to seniors living building. We've had numerous challenges with this, and I'm not going to relitigate all the challenges we had with regard to upper Thames and a man-made drainage ditch, although I found it fascinating yesterday that we heard at a PEC meeting that a proposed new wetland feature in a new development where Sunningdale Golf Course is shouldn't be called a wetland, even though they were engineering a new wetland for us, and yet at the same time, we're calling a man-made drainage ditch along Dundas a water course. Now, Upper Thames has since moved back from that position. There will still be a requirement for a Section 28 permit through this process. They are not meeting the current EMGs, but again, the EMGs are a guideline, they're not a regulatory requirement, and so I'm really, really encouraging people, this has unanimous support in the neighborhood. There's no objections from residents, and I know very rarely can any of us as Ward Counselors say that. There's always a couple of residents who are opposed, but in this case, there is not. These are experienced individuals who've built quality product in other parts of the city. I know they build quality product here. We will be on an urban corridor place type. More intensification is coming here. I know that the London Plan Heights Review is going on, but the applicant is already, or the applicant's neighbor is already working on another application for some high-density residential next door. This is a great infill project. It's got the support of the Anglican Diocese, who has severed as much land as they possibly can to allow for this development to move forward, and so I'm really, really, as the Ward Counselor, encouraging colleagues to please support this. I know that staff was not able to provide their recommendation in support, but they did work with me on making sure that the conditions in the alternate motion and the bylaw attained as many of the pieces as possible that they had expressed concern over. Yes, there are still a couple of issues, but from the whole, this is a net benefit to the neighborhood, to the Ward 2 and Argyle area, and to creating more seniors geared to seniors housing in the City of London. So I cannot strongly enough, as the Ward Counselor, encourage you to please support this.
Okay, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna pause the debate for a sec. We just have to work something out in the language that was submitted. we got as an alternative language, it's just, parts of it don't quite line up. The committee's piece needs to be structured as an amendment because there's an alternate bylaw, so we're just, we just need to adjust that to make it line up, which is why I'm just pausing the debate to work that out. I might have a question for you in a minute. Okay, colleagues, so let me explain what I'm doing, and then I might just suggest, I'm going to give you the option of taking a recess, or you can wait until I finish this. So given the proposed suggestion, first off, is there a seconder for what's being suggested?
Yes, okay.
So given that the proposed suggestion has the support to be moved and seconded, and does change a bylaw, we actually have to circulate the bylaw to members of council, even though it's not a significant change quickly, because council has to decide on whether or not when we change a bylaw, whether or not further notice needs to be given, and so we have to have that vote, and then we can consider the change. That's going to require a little bit of setup, so my preference is I would rather just take a 10-minute recess and get that all done, or you guys can sit here and wait until I do that. Want to do a 10-minute recess? Okay, move a motion for a 10-minute recess. And no one should be talking about this, by the way. I've just, this is for me to have time with the clerks to sort this out. Moved by Counselor Frank, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. I'll do that by hand. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, 10 minutes. Okay, let me explain what I'm doing, and then I might just suggest, I'm gonna give you the option of taking a recess, or you can wait until I finish this. So, given the proposed suggestion, first off, is there a secondor for what's being suggested? Yes, okay. So, given that the proposed suggestion has the support to be moved and seconded and does change a bylaw, we actually have to circulate the bylaw to members of council, even though it's not a significant change quickly, because council has to decide on whether or not when we change a bylaw, whether or not further notice needs to be given, and so we have to have that vote, and then we can consider the change. That's gonna require a little bit of setup, so my preference is I would rather just take a 10-minute recess and get that all done, or you guys can sit here and wait until I do that. Want to do a 10-minute recess? Okay, move a motion for a 10-minute recess. And no one should be talking about this, by the way. I've just, this is for me to have time with the clerks to sort this out. Move by Counsel Frank, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. I'll do that by hand. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No motion carries.
Okay, 10 minutes. Okay, let me explain what I'm doing, and then I might just suggest, I'm gonna give you the option of taking a recess, or you can wait until I finish this. So, given the proposed suggestion, first off, is there a secondor for what's being suggested? Yes, okay. So, given that the proposed suggestion has the support to be moved and seconded and does change a bylaw, we actually have to circulate the bylaw to members of council, even though it's not a significant change quickly, because council has to decide on whether or not when we change a bylaw, whether or not further notice needs to be given, and so we have to have that vote, and then we can consider the change. That's gonna require a little bit of setup, so my preference is I would rather just take a 10-minute recess and get that all done, or you guys can sit here and wait until I do that. Want to do a 10-minute recess? Okay, move a motion for a 10-minute recess. And no one should be talking about this, by the way. I've just, this is for me to have time with the clerks to sort this out. Move by Counsel Frank, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. I'll do that by hand. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No motion carries.
Okay, 10 minutes. Okay, let me explain what I'm doing, and then I might just suggest, I'm gonna give you the option of taking a recess, or you can wait until I finish this. So, given the proposed suggestion, first off, is there a secondor for what's being suggested? Yes, okay. So, given that the proposed suggestion has the support to be moved and seconded and does change a bylaw, we actually have to circulate the bylaw to members of council, even though it's not a significant change quickly, because council has to decide on whether or not when we change a bylaw, whether or not further notice needs to be given, and so we have to have that vote, and then we can consider the change. That's gonna require a little bit of setup, so my preference is I would rather just take a 10-minute recess and get that all done, or you guys can sit here and wait until I do that. Want to do a 10-minute recess? Okay, move a motion for a 10-minute recess. And no one should be talking about this, by the way. I've just, this is for me to have time with the clerks to sort this out. Move by Counsel Frank, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. I'll do that by hand. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No motion carries.
Okay, 10 minutes. Okay, let me explain what I'm doing, and then I might just suggest, I'm gonna give you the option of taking a recess, or you can wait until I finish this. So, given the proposed suggestion, first off, is there a secondor for what's being suggested? Yes, okay. So, given that the proposed suggestion has the support to be moved and seconded and does change a bylaw, we actually have to circulate the bylaw to members of council, even though it's not a significant change quickly, because council has to decide on whether or not when we change a bylaw, whether or not further notice needs to be given, and so we have to have that vote, and then we can consider the change. That's gonna require a little bit of setup, so my preference is I would rather just take a 10-minute recess and get that all done, or you guys can sit here and wait until I do that. Want to do a 10-minute recess? Okay, move a motion for a 10-minute recess. And no one should be talking about this, by the way. I've just, this is for me to have time with the clerks to sort this out. Move by Counsel Frank, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. I'll do that by hand. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No motion carries.
Okay, 10 minutes. Okay, let me explain what I'm doing, and then I might just suggest, I'm gonna give you the option of taking a recess, or you can wait until I finish this. So, given the proposed suggestion, first off, is there a secondor for what's being suggested? Yes, okay. So, given that the proposed suggestion has the support to be moved and seconded and does change a bylaw, we actually have to circulate the bylaw to members of council, even though it's not a significant change quickly, because council has to decide on whether or not when we change a bylaw, whether or not further notice needs to be given, and so we have to have that vote, and then we can consider the change. That's gonna require a little bit of setup, so my preference is I would rather just take a 10-minute recess and get that all done, or you guys can sit here and wait until I do that. Want to do a 10-minute recess? Okay, move a motion for a 10-minute recess. And no one should be talking about this, by the way. I've just, this is for me to have time with the clerks to sort this out. Move by Counsel Frank, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. I'll do that by hand. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No motion carries.
Okay, 10 minutes. Okay, let me explain what I'm doing, and then I might just suggest, I'm gonna give you the option of taking a recess, or you can wait until I finish this. So, given the proposed suggestion, first off, is there a secondor for what's being suggested? Yes, okay. So, given that the proposed suggestion has the support to be moved and seconded and does change a bylaw, we actually have to circulate the bylaw to members of council, even though it's not a significant change quickly, because council has to decide on whether or not when we change a bylaw, whether or not further notice needs to be given, and so we have to have that vote, and then we can consider the change. That's gonna require a little bit of setup, so my preference is I would rather just take a 10-minute recess and get that all done, or you guys can sit here and wait until I do that. Want to do a 10-minute recess? Okay, move a motion for a 10-minute recess. And no one should be talking about this, by the way. I've just, this is for me to have time with the clerks to sort this out. Move by Counsel Frank, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. I'll do that by hand. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No motion carries.
Okay, 10 minutes. Okay, let me explain what I'm doing, and then I might just suggest, I'm gonna give you the option of taking a recess, or you can wait until I finish this. So, given the proposed suggestion, first off, is there a secondor for what's being suggested? Yes, okay. So, given that the proposed suggestion has the support to be moved and seconded and does change a bylaw, we actually have to circulate the bylaw to members of council, even though it's not a significant change quickly, because council has to decide on whether or not when we change a bylaw, whether or not further notice needs to be given, and so we have to have that vote, and then we can consider the change. That's gonna require a little bit of setup, so my preference is I would rather just take a 10-minute recess and get that all done, or you guys can sit here and wait until I do that. Want to do a 10-minute recess? Okay, move a motion for a 10-minute recess. And no one should be talking about this, by the way. I've just, this is for me to have time with the clerks to sort this out. Move by Counsel Frank, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. I'll do that by hand. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No motion carries.
Okay, 10 minutes. Okay, let me explain what I'm doing, and then I might just suggest, I'm gonna give you the option of taking a recess, or you can wait until I finish this. So, given the proposed suggestion, first off, is there a secondor for what's being suggested? Yes, okay. So, given that the proposed suggestion has the support to be moved and seconded and does change a bylaw, we actually have to circulate the bylaw to members of council, even though it's not a significant change quickly, because council has to decide on whether or not when we change a bylaw, whether or not further notice needs to be given, and so we have to have that vote, and then we can consider the change. That's gonna require a little bit of setup, so my preference is I would rather just take a 10-minute recess and get that all done, or you guys can sit here and wait until I do that. Want to do a 10-minute recess? Okay, move a motion for a 10-minute recess. And no one should be talking about this, by the way. I've just, this is for me to have time with the clerks to sort this out. Move by Counsel Frank, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. I'll do that by hand. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No motion carries.
Okay, 10 minutes. Okay, let me explain what I'm doing, and then I might just suggest, I'm gonna give you the option of taking a recess, or you can wait until I finish this. So, given the proposed suggestion, first off, is there a secondor for what's being suggested? Yes, okay. So, given that the proposed suggestion has the support to be moved and seconded and does change a bylaw, we actually have to circulate the bylaw to members of council, even though it's not a significant change quickly, because council has to decide on whether or not when we change a bylaw, whether or not further notice needs to be given, and so we have to have that vote, and then we can consider the change. That's gonna require a little bit of setup, so my preference is I would rather just take a 10-minute recess and get that all done, or you guys can sit here and wait until I do that. Want to do a 10-minute recess? Okay, move a motion for a 10-minute recess. And no one should be talking about this, by the way. I've just, this is for me to have time with the clerks to sort this out. Move by Counsel Frank, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. I'll do that by hand. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No motion carries.
Okay, 10 minutes. Okay, let me explain what I'm doing, and then I might just suggest, I'm gonna give you the option of taking a recess, or you can wait until I finish this. So, given the proposed suggestion, first off, is there a secondor for what's being suggested? Yes, okay. So, given that the proposed suggestion has the support to be moved and seconded and does change a bylaw, we actually have to circulate the bylaw to members of council, even though it's not a significant change quickly, because council has to decide on whether or not when we change a bylaw, whether or not further notice needs to be given, and so we have to have that vote, and then we can consider the change. That's gonna require a little bit of setup, so my preference is I would rather just take a 10-minute recess and get that all done, or you guys can sit here and wait until I do that. Want to do a 10-minute recess? Okay, move a motion for a 10-minute recess. And no one should be talking about this, by the way. I've just, this is for me to have time with the clerks to sort this out. Move by Counsel Frank, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. I'll do that by hand. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No motion carries.
Okay, 10 minutes. Okay, let me explain what I'm doing, and then I might just suggest, I'm gonna give you the option of taking a recess, or you can wait until I finish this. So, given the proposed suggestion, first off, is there a secondor for what's being suggested? Yes, okay. So, given that the proposed suggestion has the support to be moved and seconded and does change a bylaw, we actually have to circulate the bylaw to members of council, even though it's not a significant change quickly, because council has to decide on whether or not when we change a bylaw, whether or not further notice needs to be given, and so we have to have that vote, and then we can consider the change. That's gonna require a little bit of setup, so my preference is I would rather just take a 10-minute recess and get that all done, or you guys can sit here and wait until I do that. Want to do a 10-minute recess? Okay, move a motion for a 10-minute recess. And no one should be talking about this, by the way. I've just, this is for me to have time with the clerks to sort this out. Move by Counsel Frank, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. I'll do that by hand. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No motion carries.
Okay, 10 minutes. Okay, let me explain what I'm doing, and then I might just suggest, I'm gonna give you the option of taking a recess, or you can wait until I finish this. So, given the proposed suggestion, first off, is there a secondor for what's being suggested? Yes, okay. So, given that the proposed suggestion has the support to be moved and seconded and does change a bylaw, we actually have to circulate the bylaw to members of council, even though it's not a significant change quickly, because council has to decide on whether or not when we change a bylaw, whether or not further notice needs to be given, and so we have to have that vote, and then we can consider the change. That's gonna require a little bit of setup, so my preference is I would rather just take a 10-minute recess and get that all done, or you guys can sit here and wait until I do that. Want to do a 10-minute recess? Okay, move a motion for a 10-minute recess. And no one should be talking about this, by the way. I've just, this is for me to have time with the clerks to sort this out. Move by Counsel Frank, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. I'll do that by hand. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No motion carries.
Okay, 10 minutes. Okay, let me explain what I'm doing, and then I might just suggest, I'm gonna give you the option of taking a recess, or you can wait until I finish this. So, given the proposed suggestion, first off, is there a secondor for what's being suggested? Yes, okay. So, given that the proposed suggestion has the support to be moved and seconded and does change a bylaw, we actually have to circulate the bylaw to members of council, even though it's not a significant change quickly, because council has to decide on whether or not when we change a bylaw, whether or not further notice needs to be given, and so we have to have that vote, and then we can consider the change. That's gonna require a little bit of setup, so my preference is I would rather just take a 10-minute recess and get that all done, or you guys can sit here and wait until I do that. Want to do a 10-minute recess? Okay, move a motion for a 10-minute recess. And no one should be talking about this, by the way. I've just, this is for me to have time with the clerks to sort this out. Move by Counsel Frank, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. I'll do that by hand. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No motion carries.
Okay, 10 minutes. Okay, let me explain what I'm doing, and then I might just suggest, I'm gonna give you the option of taking a recess, or you can wait until I finish this. So, given the proposed suggestion, first off, is there a secondor for what's being suggested? Yes, okay. So, given that the proposed suggestion has the support to be moved and seconded and does change a bylaw, we actually have to circulate the bylaw to members of council, even though it's not a significant change quickly, because council has to decide on whether or not when we change a bylaw, whether or not further notice needs to be given, and so we have to have that vote, and then we can consider the change. That's gonna require a little bit of setup, so my preference is I would rather just take a 10-minute recess and get that all done, or you guys can sit here and wait until I do that. Want to do a 10-minute recess?
I'm just going to explain, and then I'll have debate on it. So the language is slightly different, so just to make this easy, although it's very similar, but just with a little bit of reorganization. The motion is going to be basically to amend the committee's recommendation to read as follows, and then it'll be the full motion, so people can see it all together rather than in pieces. Should that pass, then there would be, as we usually do when we amend something, as amended, be approved. Should it be approved because there was a public participation meeting held with this, then we'd have a motion to decide whether or not notice needs to be given from that point on. So if notice doesn't need to be given, we'd pass the alternate bylaw today. If notice needed to be given, it would go through another committee cycle for notice. So that's what we're going to do, but right now, we're on the debate of the amendment, which has been moved and seconded, and I can go back. I know you had made some remarks, but given you know what I'm doing now, I'll let you, if you need to finish up or touch on anything before I go to other speakers, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. So I'll be really brief. I appreciate you pulling this part. It goes to show what wonderful procedural, and I don't mean this in a bad way because I self-describe myself as a nerd too, but it's what a wonderfully procedurally nerdy clerks department we have, who knows the ins and outs and dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's, making sure that everything's as it needs to be. So I appreciate that. I will just say, with respect to when we get to the point of no further notice be given, that's a pretty standard thing when we make a change at planning committee or at council on something where it's very minor in terms of, we're not changing anything that was advertised to the public in terms of the building's layout, the physical plant. The only thing that we're actually changing is putting in a new site plan condition around compensation for natural features, which I cannot imagine any member of the public objects to getting compensation for natural feature alterations. So I hope colleagues can support all of that, and that's all I have to say on that if we're ready to proceed, other than the fact that we definitely want to get this done today because I got a message from Joyce Larch, from the chair of the Argyle Senior's Task Force, and it says simply, "Don't make me come down there."
Okay, thanks, and I can concur that no notice being given is, we've done that many times. Counselor Cuddy, go ahead.
Thank you, worship, and through you, and I'm grateful to be the second on this motion, not to repaint anything that Deputy Mayor Lewis said. This is a great project. I happened to be at PEC when this was discussed, another exciting project for the East End, badly needed. I know the applicant has worked diligently with staff for a number of years on this. Looking forward to this coming to fruition. It is badly needed in the East End, your worship, and it's close to my ward, and I'm grateful for it. Thank you.
Great. Any other speakers on the amendment? Okay. Yeah, there'll be an as amended motion then. So this is just on the amendment? Okay, we're going to open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Okay, now mover and a seconder for the as amended. Deputy Mayor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Cuddy. Okay, debate on the as amended motion. I'll look for, go ahead, Counselor Stevens.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly say that I fully support this motion. I've had communication from residents over the last year and a half, excited and eager and wanting to know how this could be moved forward. So thank you to everybody who's had a hand in this, who's put the work in to get this to this place. In canvassing and talking with residents, people love the East End. They love the area. They do see a time when they'll be out of their homes, but they want to retire and downsize in that area. They don't want to leave it, and so this is much-needed housing that is going to facilitate and make a lot of people happy. So just huge thanks to everyone, and I couldn't be more pleased than to support this.
Okay. Anyone else on the as amended motion? Nope, okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to one.
Okay, and now, just to determine that, given this actually has a small change to the bylaw that was circulated in all of your inboxes, we just have to pass a motion if we want to actually do this tonight as the alternate bylaw, that no notice be given under section thirty-four seventeen of the Planning Act. So I'll look for a mover on that. Deputy Mayor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Cuddy. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Okay, so that'll show up as an alternate bylaw when we do the bylaws. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes the twelfth report at the Land and Environment Committee.
Excellent, thanks. I'll go to the thirteenth report of Corporate Services Committee and Counselor McAllister. Go ahead.
Thank you. Happy to you present the thirteenth report of Corporate Service Committee. I have been given advance notice to pull number four, so that one will be taken out. Going to put items one through three and four and five on the floor.
Okay, that's one through three and four and five, sorry, one through three and five and six, right? Does anybody want any of those dealt with separately, or? Looks like we can do those all together, so the chair's willing to move them all. Any discussion on that? Chair, you're okay? Good? Okay, then we're going to open that for voting. This is one, two, three, five, and six.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Okay, go ahead, Chair.
Okay, I'll put item four, which was the tax levy reduction, on the floor.
Okay, that's on the floor. I'll look for any discussion. Counselor Trosaw.
Through the Chair, I just pulled this because I'd like to register a no vote. I'm not going to get into a long debate about why I think I should do that, just to note it.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to two.
That concludes my report.
Yeah, thanks, Counselor McAllister. Really appreciate that. We're on to eight point three with the tenth report of the Community and Protective Services Committee. I know Counselor Ferrera chaired that, however, is doing digital today and has asked Vice Chair Pelosi to present the report, so I'll turn it over to Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before providing overarching comments on the committee, I have not been given notice to pull anything. Wondering if colleagues had anything?
Yes, anything that anybody would like to be pulled? So you're willing to move the whole piece? I'll look for comments from colleagues first, then I'll come to you for any sort of highlights you want to give.
If you want.
Yeah. So any comments, questions? Okay, Counselor, anything you want to highlight?
Thank you. So happy to put the entire tenth report of the Community and Protective Services on the floor, items one through four. Pretty concise meeting. The highlights focused around item two being the live streaming from key arenas and the infrastructure for that, and I believe Deputy Mayor Lewis will make some comments on that. So overall, a great committee meeting, and I know Counselor Ferrera is at home not feeling well, so we wish him well, too.
Right, and I just asked for speakers, but no one put their hand up. Now you want to speak? Okay, go ahead.
Just very briefly, and through you and through Ms. Smith, I just want to thank Mr. McGonigal for the work that he's done to get things where they are on the live barn streaming. This has been, we're one of the last cities to join this program, but it'll be welcome, certainly. And I know Counselor Pelosi expressed at committee her gratitude as a hockey mom and as somebody who's heading back to a bench next week, actually. Looking forward to being in the rank and being able to have parents and grandparents who can't be there connect because of this. So just want to ask you through the Chair, to Ms. Smith, please extend our thanks to Mr. McGonigal. I know there was a lot of back and forth and some details that had to be figured out on this, so I appreciate his perseverance.
Thank you very much. Counselor Trosaw.
Through the Chair, I would just like to indicate that I did have some concerns about this. I raised them at committee regarding the photographing of people in the arena and whether consent was given. All of my concerns were dealt with, so I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll open the entire committee report for voting.
Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Pelosi. I'll go on to the eleventh report of the Civic Works Committee. Counselor Hopkins, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I'd like to put the eleventh report of the Civic Works Committee on the floor. I have been asked to pull nine by Deputy Mayor Lewis, which is four point two.
Okay, so does anybody want anything else pulled? Okay, then I'm going to ask any counselors for any discussion that they might have on the items in the report. Seeing none, then I'll go back to Counselor Hopkins for anything you want to add.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. As you can see, there is a number of consent items. We did hold a public participation meeting for the drain and supported a revised motion from Counselor Frank.
Great, thanks for that. So we'll open the vote for those items.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Counselor Hopkins.
I'd like to put nine, four point two, which is Counselor McAllister's motion to update the Hamilton Road Streetscape Master Plan on the floor.
Okay, moved by the Chair. Any discussion? Go ahead, Counselor McAllister.
Sorry, I'm just getting my computer ready, one moment. Through the Mayor, I first want to start off by thanking staff for working with me on this motion and for the Civic Works Committee for their suggestion and for amending the motion to ensure that we got more thorough examination of as many options as possible to improve this important east-west corridor. You may be wondering why I'm dressed so formally today. I'm actually wearing black out of respect for those who have been injured or died in the traffic collisions along Hamilton Road. As I said at the Civic Works Committee, it is hard not to take any loss of life personally, especially when it happens in your ward. We need to take seriously what more could be done to make this road safer. With that being said, I do want to acknowledge the good work that has occurred to date along Hamilton Road. The addition of the red light camera, the increased illumination of streetlights, and the improved road markings are all welcome additions. I want to personally thank council for endorsing the expansion of the red light cameras across our city and for setting aside the two hundred thousand for improved road markings in our multi-year budget. These are good mediation initiatives, but they unfortunately do not address the concerns that I repeatedly hear regarding the design of the road itself. I get frequent complaints from area residents, commuters, who say that on-street parking and the lack of a left lane, left turning lane, make it, make Hamilton Road, and I quote, "a wild ride in the white-knuckle racetrack." When the LPS did a SEPT ed along Hamilton Road, they offered suggestions to assist with traffic violations, but admitted that the road design and the streets that feed into the road itself present unique challenges. On that note, I want to call out Egerton-Trafalgar and Hamilton Road intersection as the only intersection with such a unique layout in the city. I know some of you have your reservations about requesting the staff specifically look at this road in the manner and timeline laid out in this motion, and the Mayor and Deputy Mayor have both expressed concerns to me. However, I disagree, and in consultation with staff, this motion is being put forward now because for any redesign, it would need to be identified as part of the larger master mobility plan that is going on and the streetscape plan which would feed into that, also noting that Hamilton and Highbury is slated for redevelopment in 2029. A road corridor study would need to be recommended and done properly to evaluate these options. On that note, I also further want to clarify that the language of the motion was changed to allow for a variety of road designs to be explored. It is not, as some have characterized it, solely as a three-lane road. I want a number of options brought forward so all underwriters can review them and weigh in on this vitally important east-west corridor. I am sounding the alarm on this road because if we don't put a plan in the future now, we are going to see more tragedies occur along this corridor, especially in light of the unprecedented growth we are experiencing. Please support this motion so that we can have a future informed discussion on the design options to improve traffic safety along Hamilton Road. Regardless of the outcome of this vote, I have done my job as a counselor and brought forward a motion to address very serious concerns that I hear about frequently. We as counselors cannot be everywhere, and it does fall on each one of us to be the eyes and ears of our respective wards. Let's make Hamilton Road safer, and I do truly wish that you support this motion. Thank you.
Other speakers? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, worship. So as Counselor McAllister's indicated, I've reached out to him. I've shared that I will not be supporting this, and I'm going to take the opportunity to now speak to a few of the reasons why. And while I recognize that there have been injuries and fatalities along Hamilton Road, unfortunately, the reality is that accidents do happen. That is just a fact of life, and it happens on all of our roads, and while we should take appropriate measures to mitigate, and I appreciate the counselor highlighting some of the steps that have been taken to mitigate some of the concerns along Hamilton Road, I think that we will always have a challenge in balancing out those things. And at the end of the day, Hamilton is an arterial road. It is a road meant to carry high volumes of traffic efficiently and at, relative to other streets, high speeds. It is not a neighborhood-level street. It is not even a collector. It's an arterial. I noted that the Hamilton Road BIA sent a letter of support for this, but I recall multiple occasions in my time here at council where the Hamilton Road BIA appeared before the previous council and insisted that they could never give up the on-street parking spaces that they have, that it would be devastating to their business, and yet the majority of feedback I've heard is the biggest problem on Hamilton Road is the on-street parking, forcing people to veer in and out of the left, or the right lane into the left lane and back and forth. So that's part of it, and the reason I've heard from the Hamilton Road BIA on this in the time that I've been at council is because we just finished redoing the majority of the road identified in this motion, from Egerton through, past the Home Hardware. That road has all been redone. New PXOs were installed, paving has been installed, bike lane markings, the whole deal, that we have just redone that. We have about four thousand kilometers of road in our city, give or take. Quite a number of those roads have not seen work in twenty, thirty, sometimes forty years. Hamilton Road has had its turn in this stretch of road, and we must move on to other projects, especially when we consider that not only is the redesign of the Hamilton and Highbury intersection coming forward in 2029, but even before that, we will have Hamilton and Gore converted into a roundabout design, and I believe that that is scheduled to start in 2026. We have Hamilton and Commissioners and Old Victoria Road, which lead out to our industrial area along Veterans Memorial Parkway, that also has to be redesigned and re-engineered to accommodate for the growth of traffic both on Hamilton Road, east of Clark Road, where significant new residential infill has happened, as well as on Commissioners Road, where significant new residential infill has happened. I'm not going to say that, you know, I'm not going to criticize the counselor for doing his job because he's doing what he can for his residents, and I appreciate that. However, at the end of the day, Hamilton Road in this section has had its turn. We've just completed work there. There are other areas of investment along Hamilton Road that are already in design process or in development that will be getting upgrades as well. And so I have to balance out the fact that, including Dundas East in my ward, we have roads, arterial roads, that are in desperate need of upgrade and repair, and those have to come first, and to presume or to make the case that this needs to be considered in the multi-year budget for 2028 to 2030, that is something I can't support. I don't think that this needs to be revisited, you know, for longer than that period of time, when we have other projects that are needed in terms of funding. I heard a considerable amount of opposition to the three-lane suggestion from residents who reached out to me, and I think that that comes back to the point of this is an arterial road. If we do this, or if we were to pursue this option, I think all you're doing is forcing more traffic cut-through into neighborhood streets to either get into the Trafalgar neighborhood or to stay on Highbury and then cut across on Dundas or Florence and York. And so you're not fixing the problem, you're only moving the problem to somebody else's street when we do this on an arterial road. So for those reasons, I won't be supporting this, but I also am not supporting it because at the end of the day, if this is the way that we're going to start prioritizing road redesign, then I've got six or seven that I could bring forward to future committee meetings, and I'm sure that every other member of council has the same. We've tasked staff with undertaking the MMP and to bring forward the priorities that they've identified, and I think we need to let them finish that work. Every time we add to the MMP, we're actually delaying them getting back to us with their recommendations to move forward, and so I think it's time to shelve this one, let them finish their work, and let prioritization continue as it should be.
Other speakers? Go ahead, Counselor Ramon.
Thank you, and I'll keep my remarks brief, and while I do appreciate the counselor bringing these items forward and the concerns that he's raised around the fatalities that have occurred in this corridor, I have to agree with Deputy Mayor Lewis that we create hostilities in our own decision-making and our ability to move forward with the master mobility plan as we parse out different segments of roadways. And I know I received emails from residents asking me now to do the exact same thing, to now move motions to CWC to prioritize roadways, and what I said is that, well, the plan is that staff come back with the master mobility plan so that we can have those discussions. I know we've got a lot of work to do on Oxford Street and Warren Cliff, for instance, and I know that we've had those discussions here as to how we prioritize that corridor, but I want to mention again that, you know, that's because of some of the previous decisions that council has made around where we're focusing our bus rapid transit right now. So I hear where the counselor's coming from. I can't support it just because I do foresee that we'll have that challenge, especially when we're asking for reprioritization of budgets and timelines that we've already considered for other capital projects, so I am, at this point, not supportive.
Any other speakers? Go ahead, Counselor Trosaw.
Thank you very much, and through the Chair, I want to start by thanking the ward counselor for bringing this forward. First and foremost, he has a responsibility to look out for the well-being of people in his ward, and he's done that very well, and I commend him for taking the time to do this. However, beyond being a ward counselor, we represent the entire city. We represent the entire interests of the city, not just people in our ward. I was reminded of that many times over the years as being one of the proponents for the smaller wards back in 2005. So I understand that, and yes, there are a lot of improvements I would like to see in the Oxford Corridor on Richmond Street. I'll have a lot more to say about Richmond and Oxford and Richmond and Warren Cliff, but I want to go back to the underlying premise of Vision Zero, and I want to underline Vision Zero right now, and I'm going to be supporting what the counselor is putting forward here. I want to reject the notion that this neighborhood has had its turn. This is not a board game where we each get to come up and have our turn and roll the dice and take a spin and sit down and wait for it to be our turn again. We have to look at this organic situation as it's developing. This is a dangerous street, and it's largely a dangerous street because of the configuration. It's designed that way. And when I hear people say, "We need to move on to other projects," yes, we do, but I think that we can do a lot of these at the same time. Now, the cut-throughs, there are ways of creatively dealing with cut-throughs, which I don't think we've explored all of them, but I have spent a lot of time at the Civic Works Committee talking about the notion of filtered permeability, and I think that if we do get into a situation where there is a potential risk of cut-throughs, this is something that we'd be able to look at in terms of creating disincentives for people cutting through. So I think filtered permeability is going to mitigate this. Stressing again that we represent the entire city. Hamilton is a particular problem, and this is not a zero-sum game. I don't like putting the different neighborhoods and different streets at odds with each other. That's why if Hamilton gets moved ahead of something else that needs to be done, we have to balance that because of the deaths and injuries that have been caused. So in the interest of looking at the public policymaking as a member of the Civic Works Committee, I give this a lot of thought. I want to support the counselor. Finally, I do want to add that the Civic Works Committee did very carefully look at the original proposal, and by adding the language "which could include" to substitute out for something more mandatory, I think we're creating maximum flexibility here. So I'm going to be supporting this, and I know that there are some concerns about this, but I think we all have to sort of pull together in the case of upholding the principles of Vision Zero. Thank you.
Other speakers? Counselor Hopkins, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and just following up on Counselor Trosaw's comments about the committee work that was done, we did make that change in the motion, which could include other things such as three-lane configuration and road layout and sidewalks, which would normally be done. So I want to go back to, when I first read this motion, I wanted to make sure that we were not presupposing the master mobility plan, and I am convinced that we are not doing that. We are doing a study within the Hamilton Road Streetscape Master Plan. It's all we're doing. So given the concerns, and I want to thank the counselor for his advocacy in the ward, we're not delaying the mobility master plan. I have not heard that. That is not a concern to me, and the fact that the counselor is advocating on behalf of his ward, I would encourage that and support that, given the challenges that are experienced along- and support that, given the challenges that are experienced along Hamilton Road. So I would encourage us to support this motion going forward. It is something that these studies have a process. It's not unusual. It's not out of the ordinary, and I do not believe that we are delaying anything by supporting this motion.
Other speakers? I'm going to turn the chair over to Deputy Mayor. I'll speak briefly on this.
Thank you, Your Worship. I will take the chair, and I will ask you to hold just one moment. And now that I have time already, if you'd like to begin.
Because I said briefly, and I never do that. So first, I actually also want to commend the ward councilor for advocating for his ward, and I spoke at committee about this issue. And I've been a ward councilor, and I'd probably be either contemplating or doing the exact same thing the ward councilor was doing. In fact, I've probably done it a few times, whether that be bringing motions directly to Civic Works Committee, or suggesting improvements through processes, or even trying to prioritize things in my own ward, which I was happy to do as a ward councilor. I saw it as my role to do that. I sit with a different hat now, and I tend to think about the larger picture and the processes that we've structured and placed to follow. And although I do not deny that there are significant issues with safety on a number of the roadways in our city, and I think the councilor rightly identifies concerns that he's seen, I think there are other parts of the city that have significant concerns as well. And I also think we can do more than one thing at a time. But what we're actually doing here is stepping ahead of a process where, even in the question-and-answer committee, staff indicated that there would be corridor studies that are done as part of the Master Mobility Planning Process. And there probably won't be corridor studies done for every part of the city. And I think it would suggest that although nothing was finalized or determined, that this was one that would certainly be considered for one of the corridor studies. And I don't know if that'll come to fruition or not. I would expect perhaps it would, or maybe it won't. But the point is, staff are doing a technical analysis for the Master Mobility Plan for the city as a whole, to outline how we deal with transportation in this city for the next 25 years. And I think we have to be careful. And if I sit and represent the whole city, I want to be careful about not making decisions that I think are passionate, and there's certainly very clear examples of why there is a need on one specific road in the city. I also see that there may, or there is, needs in other parts of the city as well, and I prefer to let our staff determine this. And it may come that if this motion doesn't pass, exactly what the councilor's asking for comes to fruition through the Master Mobility Plan and a recommendation of our staff and a corridor study that determines solutions. I just can't vote today to get ahead of that process, because I'm not sure where all of the highest priorities are in the city. And I'll be honest about that. I don't know where we should prioritize the investments yet. That's why we trust our staff, and we do the analysis, and we set forth a process. And when that analysis comes forward, we can make some different decisions than's much recommended from staff. We have the ability to do that. But I would prefer to see that first, and then make the direction next, rather than integrate pieces into the process at this stage, when, if I were to vote for this, it would be very difficult for me not to support every ward councilor who came forward with the same sort of recommendation. So from my position, and wanting to be consistent with supporting the path that we've decided to carve out, with absolute and clear recognition of the concerns that the councilor is raising, and the deaths that have occurred in his community that are tragic, I still want to be consistent with the process and let that. And if the process determines that for some reason, this is not a corridor that we're analyzing, I would be happy to have the discussion at that point, when we see the whole picture of what the Master Mobility Plan is doing in the process and recommending at the end and moving forward. We do $200 million of infrastructure spending in this city every year. Every year, right? We do a lot of projects. We do a lot of things. We have billions of dollars of infrastructure that we have to invest in over the next 25 years, from a transportation perspective. There will be prioritization that we will make, and I will say today, I don't know what the right answer to those prioritizations are, but I think we've set forward a direction and a path and a process that will give us information to help make those decisions. And so I will say no to the councilor's request today. I've certainly listened to the concerns, and I will be very mindful of them through the entire Master Mobility Plan process, but I will wait to see the results of what the early phases and subsequent recommendations are that comes from that process based on staff's work and staff's technical analysis.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I will return the chair to you. I have no other speakers on the list at this time.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak to this? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll open this. This is the committee recommendation for voting.
Counselor Van Merwe-Bergen? Second call. Thank you. Closing the vote. Motion fails. Five to 10.
And that is my report.
Thank you, Councilor Hopkins. Okay. Just given, Councilor Hopkins, I know you said your report was done, but given that no action was taken, the councilor did write, and there were a number of communications associated with that, we should actually pass a motion to receive and note those communications as well. So I'd look to see if you'd be willing to move that.
I'll move that motion.
Okay. A second for that. Councilor Stevenson, any discussion on that? Okay. We'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
And that is my report.
Okay. Next is SPBC, the 13th report. I'll go to Deputy Mayor Lewis to present that.
Thank you, Your Worship. I've been asked to pull item three. I am prepared to move one, two, four, and five. Oh, sorry. I also have Councilor Close needing to pull item five. So I'm prepared to move one, two, and four at this time, unless someone wishes any of those to be dealt with separately.
Did anybody like one, two, or four dealt with separately? Seeing none, then I'll deem that to be moved by the chair. I'll look for any comments from council members on that. Any word from the chair? No? Okay. We'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15.
Thank you, Your Worship. Councilor Trosow's asked for item three to be dealt with separately, and I'm prepared to put item three on the floor now.
Okay. Item three is on the floor. I'll look for speakers. Councilor Trosow, go ahead.
Thank you very much through the chair. I would like to make an amendment to delete in paragraph B the words "at Clark Road Secondary School," and leave the rest of the motion intact. And if I have a second, I will say a little bit more.
Just give me one second. I just want to find it in the motion. Thank you, thank you. So, councilor, and I'm going to make a call here, and then, of course, if council disagrees with me, they can challenge the decision. When stuff comes out of committee, I have to determine when amendments come forward, whether they're within the scope, or if it's a fundamental change. And my understanding of the intent of the committee, as well as the scope of the project, was that if we deleted that piece, it would move from a scope of one school to, I guess, potentially the entire city. Like, I'm not sure what the scope would be. So I'm not sure I'm going to call in order like a change that would completely unscope the project from the size that it is into, I'm not actually sure what. So I'm going to determine that you, I mean, you could vote against the whole thing. You could refer it back, but I don't think you can pull out that piece, because I think it probably, well, I do believe it fundamentally changes the entire scoping of the project. So, I mean, if that's, people disagree with me on that, they can challenge the chair. We can make a decision as a council, but that's fine. Councilor Frank?
Thank you. Yes, I challenge the chair, because I think it's still leaving grade nine and 10, which would not include the entire city, as well as, I think, again, it would be scoping it so staff would be able to take direction with the scope that is existing, and still pick one school, one high school. So I disagree with your ruling.
Yeah, and that's no problem. That's why we have a procedure bylaw and a decision-making mechanism. So let me spool up the old challenge of the chair stuff. Okay. So the motion, then, that will be before us, moved by Councilor Frank, is shall the ruling of the chair be sustained? There's no debate on this. The result is final, and it will make a decision on whether or not we proceed. So because the wording is, shall the ruling of the chair be sustained, a vote yes means you agree with my ruling, a vote no means you disagree with it and agree with Councilor Frank, and so we'll put that to a vote immediately. So it's, so again, the question is, shall the ruling of the chair be sustained? And my ruling was that Councilor Trosow's amendment was out of scope with the original motion, and I wasn't allowing it.
Closing the vote. The ruling of the chair is sustained, with a vote of nine yea, six against.
Okay. So that's not a motion that's in order. If you want to continue to speak to it, council or refer it or something else, I'd allow you to do that, given the direction you're going. So if you want to continue, you can.
Which means I'm speaking to the main motion? Okay. I will be speaking against the main motion, then. It was my intention to just sort of try to reach some compromise here. I can't support this targeted to one school. I would have preferred to have given the staff in consultation with the LTC a maximum amount of flexibility in crafting this project. I tried to do that. I lost that vote. That's fine. I was not in favor of this in the previous iteration at the SPBC. I was skeptical about whether or not the important conditions, particularly the funding and the statement of purpose, objectives, would be able to be satisfied, so I voted no. So I will be voting no on this. I do appreciate the work that's been put into this so far, especially by the proponents and those in LTC who have looked at this, but I think at this point, it's time for me to say, we've put enough staff resources into this, and we, it's going to sound like an echo of what was just said a few minutes ago, but we need to move on to something else. And I don't think this is a viable project as it is. So I'll be voting no, and thank you very much.
Okay. Other speakers to the main motion? Councilor Hopkins, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. And I'm not sure if it's a point of order, but I do have a question on a comment made about referring it back, and I'd like to understand the procedure if we were going to refer this back. I understand there's usually, has to be a reason why we refer something back, and I wonder if I can get some clarification.
So, councilor, you're right. I did say you could refer it back, as you can with many motions that we have, and you're right, you usually provide a reason on why you're referring it back and what you'd like to do differently. So that would be, need to be articulated to convince your colleagues to support the referral back. Referral backs would usually have something attached to them to suggest some sort of change. I'm not suggesting, I wasn't suggesting Councilor Trosow's change, but we're always open to having things referred back. My ruling was specific to this being able to be decided at council, given the debate that we had at committee and the scope that I determined. But that doesn't mean it can't go back to committee with a referral with other directions for the committee to consider, if a majority of colleagues feel that way, but it should have something suggested in the referral motion to say what we're referring it back to do.
I would like to make that motion to refer it back, then, to look at other options. And I want to start off, I think by referring it back, I first want to thank you.
Give me one sec. I just want to do that and then get a second. Councilor, so I'm happy to do that. Referring it back for more options, you might just want to add some parameters so that your colleagues know what the debate would be scoped around, like, would it be to think about more grades, different schools? Some of the parameters would be, I think, helpful. Also, the way the motion is articulated now, it's just going to, it wouldn't really land back at committee in any different way than it came from committee, so just a little bit more context, I think, might help us understand why we're all referring it back to, because then if we all know what that is, that we've agreed, and it passes by a majority, then we've agreed that we're going to have a discussion on that. So if you want to provide a little more context, I think that would help with me seeking a second.
I'll try, since I'm doing this right off the cuff here, that the referral back would really look at other opportunities for different routes, flexibility in those routes, I think, the grades and that, and it's not excluding Clark Road.
Okay. So different flexibility, so different routes, and different, yeah, different routes, basically, what you're suggesting, right?
And if I can explain why?
Yeah. We just want to get wording, and then I'm going to tell you what it is, and I'm going to ask for a second, because we're at council. So let me just read something back to you.
Your Worship, if I could just help, maybe different school routes, maybe just to make it a little bit tighter.
And you said grades. Did you want different grades considered too? Did you want different grades considered too in that or no?
No.
Okay. Okay, so the secondary school transit pass pilot program, where you referred back to SPPC to explore options considering other school or London, it says London Transit routes serving other schools currently, but if you want that a little bit different. It's not up yet, I'm just reading it. Did you want to say school routes or London Transit routes? Okay, school routes. Okay, so that's what it says. Is there a second for that? Councillor Trosow, okay. Now we're going to load that in eScribe so people can see it. It's a referral moved and seconded. Councillor Hopkins, now you can provide your debate on the referral.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank Deputy Mayor Lewis for his work and advocacy on this and the work that he's done with the school board as well. And, you know, I think what we can do, speaking with the success of the program in Kingston, for instance, they were able to look at different routes and then decide. I think it does create a little bit of flexi, flexibility. It gives staff a little, a bit more opportunity to, to look at routes and then bring that forward. I think that is the, the way I'd like to proceed.
Other speaker, oh, Deputy Mayor Lewis, I had you before the referral. You want to go on the referral now or look for other speakers on the referral after you too?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll come back to the, the motion, the main motion later. On the referral, I'm not even sure what different school routes is actually referring to. And I won't be supporting the referral. We're, we're not going to start changing London Transit routes to serve different schools. Like, I'm really not sure what this is even asking for. But what I will say is that work has gone into this, both at the school board level and with our staff already and with London Transit now, and we've got that report back. To now start saying, oh, we're going to look at, all I can read with different school routes is that we're going to start looking at different schools. And it was the school board that identified, this is the school that they want to try the pilot at. And again, it's a pilot. So I, I would say to colleagues, if you don't want to support the pilot, then just don't support the pilot. But to refer this back to look at other routes, like, I'm really not sure what we're going to accomplish there, other than all the work that's already gone into by the Thames Valley District School Board and the work that our staff have put in already to get us to where we are and the work that London Transit has done to provide us data on the routes that serve Clark Road. We're going to just go back to square one and ask them to start over again. So, and again, I want to come back to, I didn't pick Clark Road. Councillor Cuddy didn't pick Clark Road. This is the road, this is the school that the school board recommended for attendance reasons, for academic performance reasons, for economic reasons, including the number of bus tickets that the principal has to hand out on a regular basis to students. There were a number of reasons that went into getting to this point before it came to us and more work has been done since then. I also will, will say, you know, that continues with councillor Priville talking to me about LTC things. We need to make a decision whether we want to try this pilot or not. And we heard from our staff in this report and through them, LTC, saying we couldn't start it this year because they didn't have enough time. They needed to get through some logistic pieces. They're going to come back to us with another report in terms of how they can operationalize this and maybe some factors that they're going to recommend around it's only valid during the school week or it's only valid during the school year, it's not 365 or it's not in the summer. And those are all options that we can use to, to modify the pilot project to something that's maybe scoped a little tighter than what it is now. But we either need to move forward and, and try this and let staff come back and get something in place so that in 2025 we can try this, or we don't. So I don't see the value in a referral. I don't know what school routes actually mean. And in fact, I would even take, have some questions for LTC with regard to the routes that they identified in their feedback to us because I don't think you're going to see many high school students on the express routes that they identified are serving the school. I think they're more on the neighborhood routes. I would like to, at some point, see this expand to other schools too. But first, we have to, A, prove it works and B, see if there's a source of funding. Kingston has had some success, absolutely. They've gone a little bit different path, they had some other help. But we've got what we've got, so I'm encouraging colleagues to not support the referral. Let's, let staff continue the work with the school board and the London Transit Commission, see what they bring back to us and then make a decision whether or not to go ahead.
Did you ask a question? Sorry. Okay, good. Then I'll go to the next speaker. Okay. I forgot you were presenting a committee report, that's why you're still standing. Any other speakers on this? Councillor Frank?
Thank you, and I do have some questions for staff and a little bit of commentary. So I originally supported this all the way up until now because at the beginning it was kind of framed as it was very time-sensitive and we had to move forward if we were going to make this this September, which I can appreciate. And of course, I would love to give free transit to as many people as possible, so I was very excited at that concept. But now that we have an entire year between now and when this is supposed to be implemented, I actually don't feel that time pressure right now. And therefore, I'm actually interested in exploring what is the best school for the most success. And I don't necessarily know that it's going to be Clark Road because we haven't been given a lot of data and we haven't heard from all parties invested in this initiative that that would be the best. In fact, I'm pretty sure we heard from LTC that this might not be the best school. And so if we're going to be spending, it looks like, over $900,000 in subsidies for this program, I actually want to start off by choosing the best school. So through the chair to staff, I was wondering if we've moved forward so far that we wouldn't actually be able to modify anything in this, given that some of the commentary is suggesting if we directed staff to look at other options, that would, we're too far down the pipeline. So I just would like some commentary from staff regarding that.
Go ahead.
Thank you, and through your worship. If, if, if this program is to start in September 2025, we would need direction now on what the potential option would look like. This, this would then allow us to bring a report back in Q1 2025 to lay out the options, lay out the MOU so that it can be implemented by September 2025. We're happy to go away and explore options, bring those options back in Q1 2025. Then council will have to decide on that option. It could take us then a while to do all that work to determine what is the option and how to implement that option.
Councillor Frank?
Thank you. I can appreciate that would take a little bit of work. And I'm just wondering through you to staff if they're, or I guess to the mover of the original motion for this occasion, if they could explain a little bit more about how Clark Road was selected?
So I'm happy to have the mover articulate the original motion, if they're willing to. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Yep, I'll do my best to respond to that, Your Worship. And through you to councillor Frank, Clark Road was chosen by the school board. And they had discussions with, actually, this dates back to the previous term of council when councillor Squire was still on council. And then COVID came along and things ground to a halt. But the discussion started with, we would be interested in, in trying a pilot at a school to see what the results would be for secondary students taking the bus and whether it would be something that we should look at as a different subsidy program than some of our other subsidy programs or as a complement to that. And if we were going to do that, we would need to try it at one school first. So you're the school board, you tell us what school would make the most sense for you. The school board re-engaged with councillor Cuddy and I after the 2022 election. We discussed the interest in continuing to explore the possibility of a pilot here, including, you know, some long-range goals that we have that we've shared with them. And obviously, in a pilot, they're not prepared to do that. But in the long run, you know, we're hoping that we can reduce and eliminate some of the need for yellow buses, that we can get some Ministry of Education funding to help support this, those kind of things. So then we asked them to come back to us, talk amongst themselves, talk among, with their administration and come back to us and recommend what school they'd like to try it at. And that's what they did. And then approximately, now I'm going to forget the timeline, so forgive me the date. I'm, I'm going to say early this year or early last year. Losing track of the dates now because it's been a long time on this project. They came back to us and said, we've done an analysis. We look at where students use the transit. We looked at where we think access to transportation would benefit our students academically, attendance-wise, and we also looked at what schools have routes from London Transit that serve the majority of our students and we've chosen Clark Road. I can share that other schools were considered. I know that the second, I don't know if I want to say highest prioritization, but the, the sort of second school that they suggested, a little bit further down in terms of the benefit, would likely be Montcalm. And they had come to us with multiple schools, but they said by far and away, we think Clark is the best school to try this at. And so that's why we brought the motion forward as it was based on. And we took a look ourselves at the London Transit routes that served Clark Road, as well as Montcalm. And I believe Laurier was the other school that we looked at, but I could be wrong. So don't quote me on that because memory's a little hazy. And it was Clark Road that also had the highest number of routes feeding into the school catchment zone that would actually drop students off at the school without having to change any existing LTC routing.
Councillor Frank?
Thank you, I appreciate that background. I think at this point, I would still support a referral because I would like to hear options from staff. At the same time, if the referral fails, I'll probably still support the other one because I want as many people to enjoy transit as easily as possible. I do think, we heard kind of a bit in the previous debate about Hamilton Road, trusting our staff to do the analysis and having staff figuring out best areas to put forward. And I, I feel that applies to this as well. And so as much as I appreciate the background work that councillors and the trustees have done, I do think that it would be nice to, to see some, some grading options, both from LTC and from our staff. But at this point, again, I'll, I'll support the referral and then probably support the other thing if that fails.
Councillor Cuddy?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. And just to add to the summary that Deputy Mayor Lewis made, absentee rates at Clark Road High School were some of the highest in the city. And as Deputy Mayor Lewis has, has indicated in past SPPC and council agendas that when kids at Clark Road miss the ride to school, they do not get to school. And the Thames Valley District School Board was well aware of that and that was one of the criteria that they came to us with.
Other speakers? Okay, no other speakers on the referral. So I'm going to open the vote on the referral, which was moved by councillor Hopkins.
Councillor Cuddy?
No.
Noted. Closing the vote, motion fails, five to 10.
Okay, so we're back to the main motion then. I had Deputy Mayor Lewis next and no other speakers so far on the main motion.
Thank you, Your Worship. I said a lot on the referral, so I'll be brief. I, I just think that this is one where we're either going to try a pilot and see how it goes or we're not. And if we're not, okay. If we are, great. Like councillor Frank, I would like to see more people, especially young people, because I think once driving habits are ingrained, and that was one of the reasons why grade nines and tens were looked at specifically, before they have their driver's license, before they can start borrowing mom and dad's car to, to drive themselves or purchase their own car, if we can get their habits and, and get them comfortable using transit, it becomes a more viable option for them in the long run. And, you know, I, I'm not going to speak to the realities at other schools, but I know in Ward Two and the majority of the students at Clark Road and, or I shouldn't say the majority, but the students that I know at Clark Road, and I will say the students I know at John Paul Two as well in the Catholic system. The reality is, when they hit high school, they're saving for that car. And it might be the $1,000 beater that they cobble together with hope and a prayer off a used car lot and then make regular visits to the junkyard for spare parts to keep them running. But that's what they're doing. And if we want to give them a different option, I think we get them started by showing them that transit is a better or is a viable option for them. Because right now, they don't see that with the prices we have in place for student passes, the economic realities that their parents face. What they see is, by the time they hit grade 10, get a part-time job, start putting money in the bank and start saving for that first car. Which is not ideal, and especially if you're 16, 17 years old. Then you've got to manage to pay for the gas, the spare parts, the insurance and everything else that comes with that. So I think that there's an opportunity here for us to try something and see how our students do on the uptake. And maybe that won't change. Maybe they will still continue to save for that car, much to councillor Frank's dismay. But maybe they will start taking the bus. And maybe they'll start feeling like, now I can take the bus not just to school, but I can take the bus up to Masonville to catch a movie on a Friday night. Or I can take a bus to my friend's house to hang out and, you know, play video games or whatever they're, they're going to do on a Saturday night. I know they do other things that they shouldn't be doing at that age, but at least if we give them transit, that's an option for them to do some more positive things. So we have seen other municipalities undertake this. We see some success in Halifax. Particularly, we see some success out on the Prairies. And certainly Kingston's had an interesting model. I know that they've had some problems with it as well. And I know that that was indicated by LTC, but I think that there are opportunities here. And I think particularly now is the time, as we start thinking about federal commitment in 2026 to roll out a more stable, longer-term transit funding, that maybe this is the pilot that then shows us we've got a working model to expand this to other schools and other students across the city. So I'm asking for your support in this. I don't, I'm not going to presuppose the outcome. It may or may not work, but I think it's worth a try.
Any other speakers to the main motion? Councillor Ramon, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you. So I'm being consistent on my, my vote on this item. And that is that I will support it until we receive more information on the source of financing, as well as the MOU. And if I'm comfortable with where we're going with those pieces, then I'll support it moving forward. But I do have concerns that we are adding costs through a pilot project, of which the other funders that are in discussion through the MOU are not contributing or considering contributing in a substantive way. And at this point, that leads me to believe that they have very little investment and their foreskin in the game on something like this. So if we want it to be positive and we want to see impact, we have to see all partners come to the table. Equal partners would be great, but knowing the situation at the school board right now, I understand that that might not be possible. However, I do think we have opportunity to engage with the province. They've opened up some funding avenues for the school boards to be able to engage further on transportation funding and looking at alternatives. I do also think that the discussion around the routes is an interesting one. I do know that we've heard some conflicting opinions from LTC and from Thames Valley District School Board when it comes to which schools to prioritize and why. I agree with my council colleagues, I appreciate the work they're doing on this. I agree that it would be great to see more students in classrooms because they're able to get there. I think that we all fundamentally want kids to be attending school and we want to see that enrollment go up. However, I do know that that's the role of the school board and less so the role of city council. that's the role of the school board and less so the role of city council. In our case, we want to see more ridership. And so for me, I need to know that there's going to be data and metrics associated with this memorandum of understanding that is going to fulfill that obligation, to show that we were tracking metrics and that we were using this to spur further discussion about ridership. But I want to point out that there are some really critical, low-hanging fruit that one, we can all be a part of, and two, that LTC, TVDSB, and city council should all be promoting within our schools right now. We should be trying to get more students to take transportation, to take LTC for school field trips. It's an easy, low-hanging option, since we've given passes to our elementary schools already. We have class sets of FOBS at every school in Thames Valley right now. Low-hanging fruit and opportunity, especially if they do it outside of the 9:00 AM to 9:30 window, and they do it somewhere later on in that day, where we know that volumes on the buses will be less impacted if they take a bus. I've been part of that at Masonville Public School. It's been quite successful. They've actually brought grade seven and eight students out with kindergarteners to be able to go on a field trip on the bus. Second, we can all engage when we go into schools and into classrooms, talk about ridership, talk about getting on the bus to students when we make those presentations in grade five classes. We can also go out and do a better job promoting the fact that we already have a program that's in place to allow for ridership for free for those under 12, although I will say there's some hurdles for people to even get into that program. So I do think we have some opportunities for low-hanging fruit. If this is the point of the pilot, then I do believe that we have some ability to move those targets already. And then further to that, this is an opportunity for us to add to it, but I would like to see our partners more involved financially. Thank you.
I have Counsel Cuddy next.
Thank you, worship and through you. Deputy Mayor Lewis and I often describe this as a life-changing experience for kids, because it gives them an opportunity after school to have a job, to find their path and to find their way forward. And a lot of the kids out in the East End don't have that opportunity, and I think we all know that. I can't tell you how excited Deputy Mayor Lewis and I are about this. We want to see it go forward. We want, we all want it to be successful. TVDSB wants it to be successful. LTC, and certainly the council. The only way we're going to do it is give it a chance. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the speakers I have. Oh, Counsel Stevenson, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just say quickly, I too am going to be consistent with my vote, and I won't be supporting this. I do really support having, getting more students on the buses, getting them using it. I think there's other ways that we can do that, though. And I think that selling them and their parents on the value of a bus pass and getting used to paying for that service, I think, is good. I like the ideas of using it as a field trip. I think there's lots of ways, and I'd fully get behind getting more kids on the buses. But I don't, I don't see this as a municipal council issue, and I don't see it as a priority for us to be spending funds in this way right now.
Okay, that's all the speakers I have. So with that, we'll open the main motion for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to 2.
Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. And now I will put item five on the floor. Counsel Ploza asked to have this pulled, that she needs to make an amendment.
Okay, I'll go to Counsel Ploza.
Thank you. For colleagues, this was circulated at 110. Apologize for the short notice. So looking to put this on the floor, and I'll be needing a seconder. Chief Throng had reached out over the weekend and said he needs, he's happy to still come, just he needs to update his board. First, procedurally, that's how they work. And wouldn't be able to do that prior to our meeting date. So our next SPPC date following September is October 8. So it's requesting that he be invited to come on October 8, and seeing as his board would have had a report, that the police chief be requested to submit any public reports that may be of reference for his presentation to be part of our SPPC committee agenda, if that would be available. It remains that he'd be granted an extension to the normal five minutes, giving him 10. And procedurally, I was just tying up that Part D is that civic administration be directed to invite the London Police Chief to appear before the SPPC committee as a delegation annually, along with any of their staff he deems appropriate to accompany him, just so we don't need to do this administrative task every year if we would like him to come and just update us. So I'm moving Parts A through D on the floor. They're in eScribe if you want to refresh and looking for a seconder.
Okay, so it's an amendment to just have the whole thing read as that. So it is an amendment, so, although you'll see it in there as the whole motion read. And then Counsel Ramon was willing to second. And then we'll do the amendment, and then we'll do the just-as-amended motion. So the amendment's on the floor. I'll look to any further speakers. Okay, seeing none, we can vote on the amendment.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Then a mover and a second for the as-amended motion, Counsel Ploza, Counsel Hopkins. Any discussion on the as-amended motion? Seeing none, then we'll open that for vote.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor. I think that's it.
That concludes the 13th report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee.
Okay, we got added reports, which is the 14th report of council in closed session. Counsel Lehman will present that report for us.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll present the 14th report of the council in closed session. One, offered to purchase industrial lands 2086192 Ontario Limited here on Industrial Park, and on the recommendation of the deputy city manager, finance supports on the advice of the Director Realty Services with respect to the city-owned industrial land located here on Industrial Park C3, being composed of part of lots two and three, concession two, and to be further described with a new reference plan, which is part of PIN 08151-0155, located in the City of London, County of Millsex, as outlined in red on the sketch heretofore, as Appendix A, Agreement of Purchase and Sale. The agreement is Appendix B, submitted by 2086192 Ontario Limited, the purchaser, to purchase 14.01 acres of the subject property from the city at a purchase price of $2,942,100, reflecting a sale price of $210,000 per acre be accepted, subject to the conditions and terms as set out in the agreement. Two, offered to purchase industrial lands 1127030 BC Limited at 2865 Innovation Drive, Innovation Park, Phase One, and on the recommendation of the deputy city manager, finance supports on the advice of the Director Realty Services with respect to the city-owned industrial land located in Innovation Park, Phase One, part of block 733M-544, designated as part of Part Two, part of Part Three, and Part Four, Plan 33R-17213, save and accept Parts One and Two, Plan 33R-19042, and being part of PIN 081970263, and to be further described in a reference plan to be deposited in City of London, County of Millsex, as outlined on the sketch heretofore, as Appendix A, the Agreement of Purchase and Sale. The agreement is Appendix B, submitted by 1127030 BC Limited, the purchaser, to purchase approximately 9.7 acres of the subject property from the city at a purchase price of $237,000, reflecting a sale price of $210,000 per acre be accepted, subject to the conditions and terms as set out in the agreement. Number three, offered to purchase industrial lands Maple Armor Group Corporation, Innovation Park, Phase Four, that on the recommendation of the city's, deputy city manager, finance supports on the advice of the Director Realty Services with respect to the city-owned industrial land located in Innovation Park, Phase Four, being composed of part of blocks four and five, and part of Boyd Court, closed by bylaw S-5300-275, registered as institution number ER742388, designated as Parts One and Two, on deposit of Plan 33R-17815, all in the registered Plan 33M609 in the City of London, County of Millsex, and subject to final reference plan as outlined on the sketch heretofore, as Appendix A, the Agreement of Purchase and Sale. The agreement, Appendix B, submitted by Maple Armor Group Corporation, the purchaser, to purchase 14 acres, more or less, of the subject property from the city at a purchase price of $2,940,000, reflecting a sale price of $210,000 per acre be accepted, subject to the conditions and terms as set out in the agreement. Finally, that progress was made with respect to items 4.1, 4.5, 4.6, and 4.7, as noted on the public agenda, 6.112 of PAC, 6.413 of CSC, 6.113 of SPPC, and 6.213 of SPPC. Thank you.
Okay, that's, oh, you're presenting the report, Counsel, so you get to. So we have those items before us. Does anybody want any of them dealt with separately? These are our items from in camera. No? Okay. So that's presented by Counsel Lehman. There's no debate that anybody wants to participate in, so we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
All right, that's added reports. We have deferred matters, none. Inquiries? I don't see any. There's no emergent motions. Bylaws? So we're on to bylaws. So the way we will do bylaws is we're going to do everything, including the reworded bylaw that we talked about earlier, that we're not, that we did the whole notice thing for, with the exception of 275, which is the bylaw I brought before council, and the ones related to rapid, well, the one related to the East London Link stops for rapid transit, which is Bill 28286. The 296, which is related to the Wellington Gateway Project, will be separate. And 295, which is related to the East London Link, will be separate. So yeah, that's how we'll do it. So we'll do everything except the one I brought, and then we'll do the rapid transit one separately. But the as-amended, the different, the alternative bylaw that was presented and approved by council today will be in the larger group. So for the, yes, Counsel Stevenson?
Just procedurally, so the only opportunity we have to talk about the office conversion bylaw is at bylaw time?
So we could have talked about it when we referred the communication to that section. We could also talk about it in second reading of the bylaw, because second reading has debate. A mover and a second for all of the items, with the exception of the ones we're excluding, Counsel Lehman, Counsel Hopkins. Okay, so we'll open that for voting. This is first reading. Oh, and this includes three added bylaws from closed session, sorry. Three added ones that Counsel Lehman just presented have bylaws associated with them.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Second reading of all these. Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel Prible. Any debate at second reading? Seeing none, we'll open the vote.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
This one is the same set, excluding 297, because 297 is a drainage bylaw, and we only do first and second reading at one council. We do third reading at a future council. So this is everything we just did, with the exception of 297. I'll look for a mover and a seconder. Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel Hopkins, will open third reading for voting. Okay, we'll do Bill 275, excuse me, 275 next, which is the bylaw to establish financial incentives for the downtown community improvement projects areas, is related to the office-to-residential conversion piece, with a number of updates that council had previously directed. This one, because it has a slightly different voting structure, requires a hand vote. And we could do a recorded vote if someone asks for it, but it'd be a hand vote on all three readings. So I'll look for a mover and a second or a first reading of that bylaw. Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lewis. So we'll do the vote by hand then. All those in favor of first reading? All right, any opposed? Okay, we had 14 in favor and none opposed. That's, Counsel Hopkins, were you in favor? Can we just see the in-favors again? Okay, a second reading, a mover and a seconder. Counsel Prible, seconded by, oh, Counsel Ferreira. Yes, sorry. This is second reading, so we can have debate. So it's moved and seconded. Counsel Stevenson, go ahead.
Thank you. I did just have a couple of questions. On page 305, step five of the construction phase, it says, "With respect to the OTR conversion grant program, the construction phase does, step does not apply as the forgivable loan is provided when the building permit is issued." And then I noticed that in the metrics, it talks about the number of grant defaults and the cost value of grant defaults. And I guess I was just wondering why the grant is being given at, when the building permit is being issued, rather than at the completion of it? And I just, in an era of difficulty with financing and insurance and contract supplies and everything else, sometimes it's hundreds of thousands of dollars that we'd be advancing upfront and then potentially run into problems. So I was just looking for some information there.
Mr. Mather's, go ahead.
Through you, worship. Also, for those same reasons as the reasons why it's important for this program to provide some of that funding. It allows them to be able to get some of their financing in order and provides them the ability to point to that financing with their lending. So that is the rationale for providing that upfront. We are insured, and we work very closely with our, with our We are insured, and we work very closely with our legal team to ensure that we do have that protection, with having that lien that's on title as well, to be able to ensure that we can get that funding back if we need to. But it allows them to be able to move forward with these projects more effectively.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, other speakers to this? I'll just provide a few brief comments. I'll have Deputy Mayor Lewis take the chair.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll take the chair, and I recognize you.
Sure, I just wanted to thank council for their support on first reading. I appreciate that I don't usually bring bylaws directly to council, but by doing so, on something that council has already provided a direction on, we've skipped an entire committee cycle on a council-approved program that had a council-approved update to it, with people waiting in the queue to access the updated financial structure that council's approved. So by doing this and with your support today, I appreciate that we can, we can get this program up and running about a month sooner than we otherwise could, or updated about a month sooner. And certainly, we don't want to have anybody sitting around waiting to access the program for a month, simply because it just takes a little longer for something that we were unanimous on through the committee process. So I appreciate your support today.
Thank you, Worship. And I will return the chair to you, noting no other speakers on the list.
Okay, if there's no other speakers, we will, we will vote on second reading by hand, so all those in favor.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, and I'll look for a mover and a second for third reading of this. Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. We will open third, well, I'm going to have a hand vote by third reading, so all those in favor by hand. And any opposed?
Motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, that concludes that item. The next two, or three? The next batch is three bylaws related to the different rapid transit projects across the city. So we'll do those as a group, unless anybody wants them separate? No? Okay, they'll be done as a group, so I'll look for a mover and a second for those three bylaws. Counselor Trosse, seconded by Counselor Cuddy, will open first reading for voting.
Motion carries 13 to 2.
And a mover and a second for second reading of this set of bylaws. Deputy Mayor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Lehman. Any debate on second reading? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 13 to 2.
Okay, and third reading of these bylaws. I'll look for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Deputy Mayor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Prible. We'll open third reading for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to 2.
Okay, that concludes bylaws, which means all we have left is a motion to adjourn. I'll look for a mover of adjournment. Deputy Mayor Lewis, Counselor Cuddy seconds. All those, if we do that in this, oh, we're doing it by hand. I'm just making the call. All those in favor of adjournment?
That motion carries.
All right, thank you. We're adjourned.